Let's convene the planning commission for today. If I can ask you all to stand and join me in the pledge of allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Will the clerk take their roll, please?
Commissioner Calley.
Yeah.
Here.
Commissioner Dukas.
Here.
Commissioner Rodriguez.
Here.
Commissioner Onstadt.
Here.
Commissioner Westner.
Present.
I'd like to thank or welcome our newest member of the commission. Thank you.
Thank you.
Item four, public comments. This is the time of the agenda for public comments on any items that are not on this agenda for this morning. I have two speaker cards, but I believe they're both on the agenda items. No other speakers? Okay, moving on to number five. Annual meeting to select the chair and vice-chair and to set the schedule of hearings for the year 2015. Staff?
So, I'd like to ask for nominations for the chair of the planning commission.
I'd like to nominate Michael Westner for chair.
I would second that.
And so, then I-
A nomination for the vice-chair?
No, I need the vote.
Oh, okay.
Click on your name. Sign in.
You really want this job?
Yeah.
Congratulations, Commissioner Westner. You are now the chairman. Go ahead and you do the vice-
I'll run as the vice-chair first. All right. The Chair will entertain motions for nominations of the vice-chair for the Ventura Planning Commission for 2015.
Nora, are you sure? Can I move Nora?
I have Commissioner Dukas. Do I have any other nominations? Move the nominations to be closed.
Second.
All those in favor of Commissioner Dukas being vice-chair say, oh, that's right, we don't do that anymore. You've got a vote.
I'll second that. Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
So Chair Westner, are you also going to go over the annual schedule?
Yes.
Don't let the door hit you on the way out. Yeah. I didn't sign out over there, Mike.
Please bear with us, ladies and gentlemen.
He's over in Mike.
Thank you. Unless you need it. All right, ladies and gentlemen, this is time when we set the annual meeting to set the hearings for the year for 2015, so the public has a reasonable knowledge of when these meetings will occur. Any comments from staff? All right. Any comments from the commissioners? Then I'll undertake a motion that we schedule every available Thursday for the coming year at 8:30 in the morning. Do I have a second?
I'll make, okay. I'll make the motion.
Second.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
We aye.
Oh, we got it.
I forgot. All right, we got a unanimous vote on that. So far, so good. All right, ladies and gentlemen, we shall now move on to public comments. Public comments is the section of the meeting that is set aside for anything not already agendized for the commission. If you bring any comments forward, all we can do is receive those comments or maybe ask questions, but we cannot act on it because of the Government Code section coming in, known as the Brown Act. Do I have anybody for public comment? Not seeing any, we'll move on to item number six. Approval of December 4th minutes.
Move approval.
Second.
I have a motion to second. Any further discussion?
Yes, I'd like to add this. My nay vote, I want my name registered on my nay vote. Order one.
Okay. What page was that on?
Last page.
On the last page?
Yes. Page three, I'm sorry, page five.
That's for the December, was that for the December 4th, right?
Is that what you're talking about?
Yes.
Yes, that's right.
Does the clerk have that?
The voted nay, I want it recorded.
The maker of the motion agreed to the modification?
Yes.
The second agreed to the modification?
Yes.
Any further discussion? All those in favor, vote. Before we move any further along and get into the business of the day, I'd like the new commissioner, if she would just feel like she wants to say a few words.
I'm honored and pleased to be here. I was previously- Oh, sorry. Thank you. I am honored to be here and I look forward to serving on the commission. I was previously on the Ojai Valley Municipal Advisory Council. Thank you.
Welcome.
Welcome, Commissioner.
Welcome.
All right, let's get into the business of the day. Item number seven, PL 13-0109, County Ventura Draft Wireless Ordinance. And presenting today is Erin Engstrom.
I may not look like Erin, I'm not Erin. Actually, my name is Rosemary Rowe and I manage the long-range planning section. I'll be doing the introductory section and that will be followed by Erin's presentation of the meat of the ordinance.
Thank you.
Can we have the presentation? As we're getting the presentation up, I'd like to acknowledge some folks who-
Erin's, Erin's, um, okay.
As we're getting started, I did want to acknowledge folks who participated in the development of this ordinance. That includes the former case planner, Annie Shim, former council member, Robert Kwong, current council member, Jeff Barnes, members of our management team, and our consultant who is here today, Andrew Siebold. As I mentioned, I'll be just doing the introduction and then Erin will be doing the rest of this The project started in late 2012 when the board authorized us to prepare a comprehensive set of amendments to the non-coastal zoning ordinance. And there were several purposes behind that. One is the increased demand for permits, but one of the main reasons is that we simply want to provide greater certainty for staff and applicants when they're processing wireless facilities. Today, and we rely on a set of guidelines adopted by the board back in 1999. They're guidelines, they're not regulations, so this would serve an important step in terms of processing wireless facilities. The non-coastal zoning ordinance, which is the bulk of this amendment, applies, of course, only to non-coastal areas. And we wanted to mention that in the non-coastal zoning ordinance, there is a provision that says it does not apply to the public rights-of-way. There is a separate ordinance that was processed by the Public Works Agency that was adopted by the board, I believe, last year. So this project will apply to non-coastal areas. We also have a general plan amendment that would apply countywide, and there are amendments to two area plans. The only reason we have area plan amendments is because those plans currently have both policies and standards related to wireless communication facilities. We have no such policies in any other area plans. So who's going to use these regulations? Well, primarily the telecom industry, but government organizations also process permits for these facilities and as do amateur radio providers, at least when they're co-locating their facilities on a government or a commercial facility. I wanted to emphasize that we have separate set of regulations for amateur radio when they're accessory to a dwelling and also for radio and television facilities. The scope of work for this project did not include amendments to those regulations. We have some really minor ones, but generally speaking, this is really about a new ordinance that addresses commercial facilities. Another note on that is that when we went to the board back in 2012, we did emphasize that we intended to process the project with a negative declaration and not environmental impact report. And so we did not have, well, basically, the funding for an environmental impact report for this project. So as we moved through it, we realized that we needed to essentially incorporate mitigation into the ordinance itself. So where are these facilities cited? Well, they come in a broad range of sizes, but they're everywhere. They're in every zone, they're allowed in every zone, and the purpose there is to provide adequate coverage and capacity for wireless facilities. As you probably know, the federal government, i.e. the Federal Communications Commission or FCC, has been very involved in the development of regulations for these facilities. They consider it to be part of, I guess, the national goal to make sure that coverage and capacity is adequate. In the county, however, most of the facilities are actually located in our agricultural zone and our open space zone. About 85% of our permits are there. One reason is very simple. That's from a geographic standpoint where we, most of the zones' coverage in the county is open space or agriculture. We used a fairly rigorous process to develop this ordinance. We started early on with public input, both out in the communities. We also met with the industry representatives early on. Once we had a set of regulations, we went back out to the communities, we went back out to meet with the representatives from the industry to review all the regulations. As you may know, we originally intended to be here in late October. The delay was caused by the fact that the FCC produced a set of new regulations in October that applied to modifications to existing facilities. And so we decided to wait, go through that, and absorb those new regulations, and to update this ordinance to reflect those new regulations. We had three main objectives for this project, and I would say the third one has probably been the most difficult one to achieve because trying to balance the need for responding to demand and also complying with the laws, we wanted to balance that with making sure that the community still has adequate opportunity to provide input and that in the process of building this network, we are sensitive to the need to protect the county's visual resources and the character of our communities. In terms of responding to the demand, I think what we're primarily doing is providing a clear set of permitting requirements and clear regulations. The SEQA findings for this project should also serve to help us process permits quickly in terms of that SEQA evaluation does a lot towards evaluating visual impacts. So the assumption is that if a new facility comes in and it's consistent with those development standards, that there should be no visual impacts. We expect that to really help streamline the process for these permits. Of course, we needed to provide consistency with federal and state laws. Erin Engstrom will be addressing the second two on this list. I wanted to mention, though, the Telecommunication Act of 1996, which had really two main provisions that we needed to keep in mind, and one is that the county is really required to allow telecom industry to fill gaps in coverage. We can't deny service. And secondly, we are prohibited from regulating for radio frequency emissions, also called RF emissions. As I mentioned, we wanted to make sure that we protect the county's visual resources, and we started off by creating a new policy that will go into the general plan. We then followed that up by developing a consistent set of development standards that would actually achieve that goal. Early on, we used our public meetings to get input from members of the public on the new development standards. And what we used is what we call that location-based approach. We identified three basic kinds of areas in the county, our flat ag lands, our hilly terrain, hilly terrains and the ridge lines, and finally, our urban areas. I believe that there's an exhibit in your staff report, Exhibit 7, that gives you some more information on that public input process. We went out to the communities and showed them different kinds of facilities in those three areas, and they got to vote on them. So we got that as part of our public input. These are, just gives you some examples of different facilities in those three kinds of areas. Your staff report includes a set of exhibits. The first two, number two and three, are the actual amendments that we're proposing today. Exhibits four and five are the SEQA documents, including the public comments and responses. There are three exhibits that really outline in a lot of detail the public comments that we receive, five, six, and 12. And Exhibit 7 describes that early public outreach program. And finally, we have some exhibits that go into a lot of detail on some special issues that we face during this process. One is reasonable accommodation for amateur radio, which is part of the PRB-1 analysis, that's the law for that, and the Section 6409 implementation, again, that's the federal I'm now going to hand this off to Erin. He will be going through each of these key issues as he goes through his summary of the project, and in particular, the last four items on this list, he'll be going into in greater detail in terms of the key issues that we faced in putting this set of regulations together. Erin?
Thank you, Rosemary. Good morning, Commissioners. Chair Westner, my name is Erin Engstrom. I'm a project planner who has been tasked with this wireless facilities ordinance for the non-coastal zoning ordinance. This does not apply to facilities in the public right-of-way in the non-coastal area. And so I'm here to walk you through the proposed amendments, touch upon, I think, four key issues at the end, and answer any questions that you might have. So basically, from a top-down approach, the general plan includes some existing policies for wireless facilities, or that may pertain to wireless facilities, but no specific policies for wireless facilities. So as Rosemary mentioned, one was added. The general plan right now has policies to protect existing scenic resources as well as urbanized areas and to site development in a manner that's consistent with those goals. There's policies to protect scenic resource protection overlay zones, which are shown in pink on this map here. And they also have, some of those policies relate directly to wireless facilities in terms of avoiding silhouetting on ridge lines and blending with the natural surroundings. There is an existing policy for public utilities to promote the efficient distribution of these facilities. Forty percent of households today do not have landlines anymore. So increasingly, wireless facilities are needed to provide cell service to businesses, residents, as well as public safety officials. The State Utility Commission also regulates wireless facilities, therefore essentially they are a utility. The proposed policy will also be located in the public utilities section. It essentially states that visual impact should be minimized and these facilities should be designed to blend with the environment. So Thousand Oaks and the Ojai Valley area plans have existing wireless facility policies. Some of them function as development standards. Some of them, some of them have, were amended, the terminology was amended to be consistent with the wireless ordinance, and it had one policy, one goal was to avoid antennas. That language was smoothed out a little bit more because that could be inconsistent with the Telecommunications Act. And the 45-foot height limit is preserved, so that will overlay or supersede the heights that are in the zoning ordinance that you'll see in a few minutes. This is an example of one of the development standards that was in the Ojai Valley area plan that was replaced with development standards in the zoning ordinance. There was a provision for abandoned facilities. You'll see that the ordinance provides a more thorough description and process for that, including abandonment, voluntary termination, and site restoration, which is rather important. So now we're moving into the zoning ordinance itself. So, you know, this project's called the Wireless Communication Facilities Ordinance, includes these general plan, area plan amendments, but the ordinance itself would be a new section in the NCZO in Section 8107-45.2. Other sections had to be updated for consistency with this new section, and it's a 30-page ordinance overall, so it's substantial in size. The major three sections are the application submitted requirements, development standards, and modifications. Those are the longest sections. You see here is a list of definitions that are proposed for this project. They generally list the types of facilities that we expect to see in the county and also include some terminology for aesthetic issues. I'll go through and show you some pictures of the types of facilities so you can become familiar with them. These are building concealed facilities. Essentially, the wireless antennas are hidden behind a steeple, a facade, or a mansard, and the equipment boxes are also hidden either in the building, on the roof, or underground, ideally not anywhere the public can see them. So stealth facilities are what we, the terminology we use for a stealth or concealed facility that has minimized visual impacts. Typically, we think of stealth facilities as, you know, faux palm trees, or faux trees, or faux rocks, but the ordinance also considers stealth facilities to be facilities that blend in with the surroundings. So in instances where a tower is behind, a monopole is behind utility lines in an ag field, for instance, a faux tree may have a broader visual impact than a cell tower that looks similar to the utility line. That would be considered a stealth facility, even though it does not use faux standards. Similar concept is with really small facilities on ridge lines. Ideally, if they're small and they don't stand out from the distance, then those would be considered stealth, even though they do not use paint, or camouflage, or stealth concealment. Another example is in ag fields, if there's a winrow of trees, as shown on the upper right there, that blocks it, blocks the view of the facility from the road, that could be considered a stealth facility as well. So you also see these faux facilities, and these are typically the regularly considered stealth facilities, trees, water tanks, mono rocks, flagpoles. The ordinance is open to interpretation, so if someone wants to propose a type of stealth facility, such as a sculpture or an artwork, we're flexible to that as long as it matches the surrounding visual environment. Another type of stealth facility are roof-mounted facilities. These could be hidden behind parapets, concealed in chimneys, smokestacks, or they could simply be set back enough distance from the road or the public viewpoint such that they are not visible on the roof of the building. Stealth flush-mounted facilities are stealth facilities that would go on the side of a building or another type of structure. You see these on lattice towers, on light poles, on buildings, as well as signs. The industry refers to these often as small cells or PICO cells, and these are used to intake data from cell phones. And then we have the traditional non-stealth facilities, monopoles, large colocation facilities, and lattice towers. These are sometimes referred to as macro cells, and they primarily, they both transmit and receive the data, but they're really adept at broadcasting data over long ranges. So those are the types of facilities. You see here in the use matrix that those types of facilities are listed under wireless communication facility on the left-hand side. And essentially, stealth facilities are allowed in all zones. This graph doesn't show the commercial and manufacturing zones, but they're allowed there as well. Non-stealth facilities are broken up into small facilities and large facilities. If they're under 50 feet, they'd be allowed through a planning director, conditional use permit, which is currently how all wireless facilities are permitted today. As an incentive to go stealth or to have shorter facilities, a non-stealth facility over 50 feet will be reviewed by the planning commission. This is also consistent for the commercial zone. Commercial zone, only stealth facilities would be allowed, but the manufacturing zone would allow all types. There are some exceptions to what the ordinance covers. Residential TV satellite dishes are okay, will not require a permit. Amateur radios, if they're accessory to the dwelling of the amateur radio user, will not require a permit. Temporary facilities for events that do not require permits or for emergencies, and as I mentioned earlier, the public rights-of-way are not covered in the non-coastal area. And radio studios are defined as occupied, they have a worker on the site, so that's not consistent with a wireless facility. That's the difference between a radio station, a radio studio, and a wireless facility is that they have an employee on the site. So now I'm delving into the zoning ordinance a little bit more, the proposed zoning ordinance for wireless a little bit more. And on government facilities, these antennas are typically associated, allowed as an accessory use to the underlying permit for fire, police, as well as radio studios. Sometimes faux standards can obstruct the ability for safety, and these instances, they can get a planning director waiver for the development standards and for the stealth design standards in order to provide public safety services. So now, the application submitted requirements have been outlined in the draft ordinance in Section 45.3. It requires propagation diagrams to show evidence of the need for the height of the facility. Overall FCC compliance, which is basically a radio frequency emissions report provided by an engineer that states the facility is compliant with the federal standards. And a colocation letter for our file for when future facilities are proposed nearby. And visual impact analysis. This is an example of visual impact analysis shown here, where they simulate a faux tree, a faux monopine in the bottom and without it at the top from a public viewpoint. So this shows, you know, this is an ideal situation where you have a monopine that is nestled amongst other trees and blends in really well from a public viewpoint. So now the development standard is the key section, includes each of the following. I'll go through them in the next slides. Also, protections for historic resources are included. One reason for creating the ordinance is that the county has some sites with wireless facilities that differ in their appearance and their design and their textures. The development standards will help make these sites more consistent amongst the types of facilities because they can be permitted at different times and by different owners. So one idea is consistent design that we're looking for. Overall, the ordinance requires all facilities to be stealth as a baseline, but there's exceptions that they may apply for, and one of the key ones is if the facility is not prominently visible from a public viewpoint. So that means if it's hidden behind a winrow, if it's a small facility located way up on a ridge line, mountaintop, then it would be not prominently visible, or if it's real small and blends into a building. There are also exceptions for ridge line standards because if- There are also exceptions for ridge line standards because if, if the operator can prove that they're necessary on that ridge line, they are protected by the Telecommunications I mentioned the exception for public safety, and, and basically the height, if it exceeds the max stealth facility height, the trees in our area, the pine trees, eucalyptus trees, they go up to 80 feet. That's the highest stealth facility that we can think of. If a facility is proposed to be a tree that's higher than that, it's not considered a stealth facility. It would be permitted as a non-stealth facility, but would still be allowed. There is no height limit in the ordinance for non-stealth facilities. As a tool to help, help direct where facilities will go and help cite them in a manner that reduces land use incompatibilities, there's a preferred locations list and a non-preferred locations list. These will feed into the alternative sites analysis that's included in the applications. So basically, if someone submits an application, first they should see if they can co-locate a facility, then they should see if they can make sure the facility is not prominently visible from a public viewpoint, and see if it's not, if it can be cited somewhere else than a ridge line. The first preferred locations here are essentially that. They ask that the facility be located on another facility, either colocation or flush-mounted, could be on a building, on another facility. This reduces the environmental impact, the footprint of creating new ground-mounted towers. The next two protect urbanized areas by concealing the facilities and citing them in industrial zones which would have compatible land uses. And the next two, the last two on the preferred locations list reduce the need for making new access roads and other, other items for, for wireless facilities. The non-preferred locations list, you see, protects residential areas from, from facilities. It says that they should be cited away from residential areas if possible, as well as protects more environmental resources. Height standards, you see the table on the right here is the height standards for trees. These are based on the height limits that actual trees mature to. And then the, on the left, you see a list, basically, facilities that are on buildings are generally relegated to the zoning height, maybe a few feet taller in order to send the signals above surrounding And as I mentioned earlier, there's no limit for non-stealth facilities, and the maximum for stealth is 80 feet, but they have to match surrounding trees. So if a faux monopine is proposed somewhere, there should, it should be the same height as nearby trees approximately, or if there are no trees around it, the development standards request that trees would be planted around it that will match the size within a few years. So the idea is not to have a standalone faux tree in the middle of an ag field. These are some of the stealth design standards. Generally, again, just blending into the environment, whether they be on a building or in a natural setting, either through screening or through faux materials, or through citing considerations. There are setbacks included in the ordinance. It reinforces the standard setbacks for all zones. A wireless facility cannot be included in the, in the standard setbacks. Once in a while, these things fall over. So there is, for ground-mounted facilities, they must be located at least 50 feet away, or the height of the facility away from any off-site dwelling units, regardless of whatever zone is involved. Fire clearance was an issue. Sometimes there's fire clearance on neighbors' properties for wireless facilities, so if feasible, these would be cited enough back 50 or 100 feet, depending on the type of facility, such that neighbors don't wake up to see fire clearance on their property. Concealment retention. Basically, there are provisions in the ordinance to protect facilities from, from, from being modified such that they become prominently visible from a public viewpoint. There are provisions to protect historic landmarks when the facilities are cited either on historic buildings or in historic districts. There are provisions for sensitive species. The ordinance mentions the condor, but generally the U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service has migratory bird recommendations for wireless facilities, which we endorsed and included in the ordinance, such as unnecessary lighting, you know, nothing more than what the FAA would require for tall facilities, as well as marked guy wires so that birds can see them. This picture is a picture of a few facilities here in the county, and you see that without the markers that I put on there, the guy wires are very difficult to see just in regular light. So the county has ridge line facilities. The ordinance will not, does not make these non-conforming facilities. These facilities are still allowed, but when they come up for renewal, the applicant must demonstrate that they're, that they cannot be moved. They must be retained on the ridge line for their successful, to send signals successfully, and they must blend with the surrounding, surroundings. And again, the ordinance discourages new facilities being silhouetted on ridge lines. And so an example here is if they will be put on ridge lines, you know, maybe paint them green and, and have a ridge line behind it, or put it on the face of the hill so that they don't, they are not silhouetted. Use small enough facilities. And here's an example of these so-called popsicle sticks up close. That is not a term we used in the ordinance. Some general provisions for compliance with federal standards, maintenance and monitoring. The county has the right to request third-party review for things like RF reports, the alternative sites analysis, the preferred locations analysis, although we currently have this, retain this right now, and it's rarely used, hasn't been used in the last few years that anyone can recall. So this is the last large part of the ordinance. It discusses the modifications. Basically, most modifications today are discretionary decision. The idea here is that, given the increase in demand and the new federal law, streamlining colocations for putting one, citing one facility on another facility is something that we can all agree on. So there's a number of new provisions to promote colocations and, and the incentives while still being able to navigate around environmental impacts. The ordinance will also make it easier to do replacements of equipment and minor modifications. So that's a zoning clearance. That's basically a by right approval. Check the box, yes, over the counter practically. Oh, and you'll see at the end here, there's the 6409A modification, which is pursuant to the federal law. So if the project does not qualify for a zoning clearance, the next step up is a permit adjustment. This is technically a discretionary decision, but is rather minor overall. It, the, the facility must qualify for each of the following. It's not any or or, but it must, you know, check off each of these in order to allow modification. Anything that does not qualify for those would be a minor or major modification, which would open up the sequel analysis again to make sure that the facility is consistent and that does not create environmental impacts. The modification does not create environmental impacts. So it's a waterfall approach. Zoning clearance, permit adjustment, and then a minor or major mod last. This shows the tiered permit structure overall. So the easiest thing to do is to get a zoning clearance to co-locate a facility on another facility. The next step up is to get a CUP from the planning director for a stealth facility up to 80 feet in height, or a non-stealth facility up to 50 feet in height. There is no height limit on non-stealth facilities, but they do require a CUP from the Planning Commission if they are over 50 feet. It's a more rigorous public hearing process. It makes it a little bit more difficult to get the approval. So the permits, all of the CUPs expire in 10 years. That's how it currently is, and we are not proposing to change that. A minor or major modification is required for time Any upgrades, upgrades should be done to bring the facility into conformance with the development standards. They will not be allowed to go trend away from the development So with the implementation of the development standards, some facilities will inevitably, inevitably be legal non-conforming facilities. There is a one-time, 10-year time extension allowed to help these facilities come into conformance. That would be in addition to whatever time is left on their current conditional use permit, which could be up to 10 years. Major modifications would not be allowed. This essentially will net facilities that are very far from the development standards and require them to be, you know, replaced or, if, if they're, if they're just not even close at all. So that's basically a really quick walkthrough of the zoning ordinance, proposed zoning ordinance. I can respond to any questions, but there are four, four key issues I'd like to touch upon before we proceed into any questions. The four key issues that we came across are these issues, and we will discuss these in the following slides. The county listened to and responded to radio frequency concerns. We updated the ordinance for consistency with the new federal law that was released in October, and numerous revisions were made to the ordinance per amateur radio concerns. So briefly touching upon the RF emissions issue, this is the provision in the Telecommunications Act that states essentially that local governments shall not regulate modifications or facilities for the basis of radio frequency effects. These are also, this is also interpreted to include electromagnetic fields or electromagnetic emissions. So the draft ordinance requires consistency with the FCC RF exposure limits. These limits are set at 1/50th of a level proven to be harmful to the human, human body, human tissue heating essentially. So, so there's a safety level. The federal standards are 1/50th of that level. We also require the RF reports and have the right to ask for a third-party review to verify those reports. There are provisions in the ordinance that indirectly address RF, such as the setbacks and the non-preferred locations list that includes residential as number one. The county, the, the planning division has also decided to upload a map showing where existing facilities are, as well as update that map for new facilities as they, as they are permitted. And antenna search dot com also provides references to existing sites, although we found that it's not 100% accurate in our analysis. So to conclude with these three points regarding RF emissions, the wireless ordinance reinforces that existing pattern that was shown at the beginning of the slideshow, where most of the facilities are located outside of urbanized areas, but provide services into these areas. While the county is sensitive to radio frequency concerns, there is no conclusive evidence that prolonged sensitivity to low exposure is a health risk. Most of the studies today are regarding RF risks, risks from cell phones and not cell towers. And then the catch-all is that it is illegal, illegal for the county to regulate for these facilities for federal, per federal law. So essentially, we cannot go out with a meter and test these facilities for RF compliance. That is the FCC's job.
Excuse me, sir?
Yes, sir.
And how is that accomplished? How does, do they check all of them regularly, or does this arise from complaint?
Well, so I'm not, I don't, don't work for the FCC, but I think that it is essentially a complaint-based process, and that the FCC will send out representatives to test the facility once someone complains.
How would a third party know they exceed RF?
Well, a third party can, can get an RF meter, or consult with somebody that has an RF meter, or hire a technician to look at the RF.
Thank you.
You're welcome. So the next section is on Section 6409 modifications. So this is the new federal law. This is the letter of the law. Local governments shall approve an eligible request if it does not result in substantial change. So shall approve is construed to be a zoning clearance here at the county. Substantial change will be discussed in a little, in a few more minutes in the next slide, but that's a very important part of the law. And essentially, an eligible request includes colocation, removal, or replacement of, of equipment on the facility. So that term substantial change, shall approve a facility that's not a substantial change. This is a list of items that are a substantial change and therefore would not be allowed. Excavation outside of the current site, the facility never received an original permit in the first place, and modification that would defeat the concealment elements of the structure. So the last one is a useful tool for local governments to protect against The following modifications, this list would, is items that would not constitute a substantial change. So wireless facility can essentially go, a cell tower can go up 20 feet in height or 20 feet out, and add some new equipment boxes under the new law through a zoning clearance. If the wireless facility is on a building, a light pole, or something, or another structure called a base station, it can go up 10 feet in height or 6 feet from the edge, and also add some equipment boxes. So this is required by the federal government, provided that none of these defeat the concealment elements. So pardon my coarse graphics here, but this is an example of a monopine that could be modified per the new law. What the county is looking for is, is a modification that would increase the height and conceal the new antennas underneath, you know, faux tree branches. We're not looking for a modification that would extend the antennas beyond the branches, or increase the size such that they become visible from a public viewpoint. No increased aesthetic environmental impacts. On a building, you know, conceivably the law would allow from, you know, one panel antenna to add a few more into the building through a 6409 modification. However, the letter of the law includes the building and the definition of a base station, and it says it can go 10 feet hol, taller. So it is conceivable that buildings could have 10 feet added to them and, you know, additional antennas sticking 6 feet out. So these will have to be reviewed on a case-by-case basis to determine whether or not the concealment elements are defeated, and whether or not applies, whether or not the law, you know, the height increase of the building would be allowed. The law doesn't state no additional floor area or anything like that, so there are some, there could be some major loopholes until the law is interpreted further. So in response to the law, the updates that the planning division conducted essentially, you know, includes the zoning clearance that we mentioned, a definition that uses the terminology from the federal law. And, you know, the, the implementation is meant to be flexible so that the ordinance can withstand changes or legal cases that will refine the law, either by the FCC or decided in the courts. Basically, nobody knows how to implement the law today. Industry representatives have not implemented the law yet. Local governments have not implemented the law yet. We are one of the first to implement this law, therefore this is our best attempt at how to do it. So two more key issues, and then I'll be done. Amateur radio, basically, the planning division set out not to change the regulations for amateur radio facilities, which are usually accessory to a dwelling. However, sometimes they need repeater stations up on ridge lines and, and other facilities to provide longer communications. That's where they come into the wireless ordinance as a wireless communication facility. After presenting the ordinance, wireless amateur radio interests expressed some concerns. Modifications were made to the ordinance per those concerns, and an amateur radio working group was formed as well. These are some of the options for how these facilities are cited. Basically, it's pretty, it's really, it's rather easy to get a zoning clearance for facilities up to 40 feet if they're an accessory to a dwelling. They can be co-located more easily today, and there are mobile, and then there are mobile facilities on cars or even backpacks, and as well as ground-mounted facilities, which are basically really similar to cell towers. This table summarizes amateur radio. Under federal law, the county has a responsibility to reasonably accommodate amateur radio and, and provide the least practical, practicable regulation. So these are the types of amateur radio facilities listed on the left, basically how they can be cited in the county, and they are allowed in all zones today. The development standards that are being implemented through this ordinance would only apply to facilities that qualify as wireless communication facilities. So it's ground-mounted, building-mounted, or colocations. You can see that there are exceptions to having to use the development standards. If they're not prominently visible, or if they're co-located on a public safety facility, they are included in that net of public safety because they're used for emergency communications. The change in the permit type, there is no change when they're affiliated with a residential dwelling. If they are ground-mounted over 50 feet high and not a residential dwelling, then they do get sent to the Planning Commission. The process is much easier to co-locate now for amateur radio, and there was no change for, still a planning director CUP for mounting them on a building, and temporary facilities may or may not require a permit depending on the use. And temporary facilities may or may not require a permit depending on the use.
Excuse me?
Yes, sir.
Question, since we're talking about residential. How was this ordinance impacted by facilities that are put into planned communities, someplace where you have rules and regulations, HOAs?
Right.
Is there a preemptive process that occurs here?
So the federal law for reasonable accommodation specifically excludes HOAs, recognizing that condo communities are a contractual agreement amongst private parties, therefore, federal laws for reasonable accommodation do not apply. Essentially, those amateur radio interests would have to have a remote facility located on another facility or elsewhere outside of the HOA, to have, you know, to have a large antenna.
Thank you.
You're welcome. So the last section here is wireless industry recommendations. We received a few comment letters. Overall, we had two meetings with industry representatives, and there were, I think, at least four rounds of comments regarding drafts of the ordinance. Many result, you know, as with every process, some of the recommendations resulted in changes, others did not. Some of the exemptions that were requested were not granted because of the uncertainty, primarily because of the uncertainty associated with Section 6409 implementation. Once a facility is there, it can grow by at least 10 feet out, 10 feet up, 6 feet out. I'm not going to go through every detail there. But there were a few changes that we're willing to discuss to you today that came in at the last minute. Article 2 you see includes some pictures in it, which are proposed to provide guidance for what wireless facilities, faux wireless, stealth wireless facilities should look like. They would not be used for the findings, so we can either, you know, remove the pictures, put them in a handout, or try to clarify that these are just examples only. The two other changes are shown in these two slides. Basically, in the application submitted requirements, there's a section for additional information. We had asked for a description or diagrams of what a 6409 modifications could look like. So when a new facility is permitted, we wanted the applicant to conceptualize what can happen to it, what is the building structural envelope for 6409 modifications. We'd be willing to change that and ask for that type of conceptualization for non-stealth facilities only, because stealth facilities are somewhat protected by the concealment elements provision. The third change that we are considering here today at the planning commission hearing for implementing the, well, so it's illegal for the Telecommunications Act for the county to regulate the latest wireless technology, to regulate technology, power outage from these facilities, output for these facilities. So basically, we'd be happy to remove that phrase from this, from these upgrades provision. So when the permit's up after 10 years, if the facility can get smaller, or have less visual equipment, the county would like to retain the right to request those types of That being said, the last section here, the staff report includes a list of recommended actions. The, you know, just overall for public review, the planning commission report was emailed to 550 stakeholders on January 23rd, there was an eighth-page ad posted on January 24th, and a sequel review occurred in September. Today, the planning division is asking for the commission to certify that they have received and reviewed the report, to adopt the negative declaration, and to certify, find that the ordinance is in general welfare and is good zoning practice. Adopt a resolution, sorry, adopt a resolution for the board to adopt a resolution approving amendments to the general plan and area plans, that's done through a resolution. The NCZO amendments would be adopted through an ordinance approving those amendments. And the guidelines from 1999 are outdated and should be repealed, so there's no overlapping regulations, and specify that these documents be housed within the clerk of the board. As my presentation today, I do have extra slides on some of those key issues, so if you have more questions, I can use those.
Since this is a little different, normally we have the staff report, and then we have the applicant present. Since the staff and the applicant have won in the same today, I'll go ahead and, are there any questions of staff of the commission? Who'd like to go first? No, after question? Questions?
This is a matter of first impression probably for the county of entering many counties in California, correct?
Yes, this law has not been implemented yet in any county or jurisdictions that I know of, and it applies to the whole nation, Section 6409 does.
So we're not aware of any other ordinance in the state that attempts to do what we're trying to do, is that correct?
Well, I have seen some drafts, you know, Camarillo has an ordinance coming out, Ojai has one coming out, and they have attempted to include, you know, implement the federal law as well.
Right. It seems a rather Herculean effort to simplify a situation where we have a separate ordinance for public right-ofways, there are exceptions for Ojai and Thousand Oaks, and we've got the federal preemption, which sits out there all the time. And so I commend you and the staff for your efforts in this regard. I don't know how, I'm interested in the situation where we have a conflict between your ordinance and the FCC, and you had indicated we had an out which related to aesthetics or...
Right.
Could you explain that to me, please? Is that something we may hang our hat on and could be involved in litigation, I suppose?
Well, so the law has not, like I said, the law's not been implemented yet, there is no case law precedence to implement the law.
Maybe I'll jump in here, and I'm sure Aaron would do a fine job, but maybe I can simplify. So what our ordinance does is set forth a process for processing these 6409 modifications that are authorized under federal law. And so we're in no way attempting to conflict with or do anything that would undermine the federal law. We're just simply plugging in that right that wireless providers have to that type of modification into our process by requiring a zoning clearance. But we've defined 6409 modifications, so that's a defined term. And so what the ordinance says is, if you qualify for 6409 modification under federal law, then you absolutely get a zoning clearance. And so the benefit of that is, assuming that the federal law will change through, either through more FCC actions or federal cases that come down, our ordinance has that flexibility built in. And so if rights expand or contract under federal law to get that type of modification, then our ordinance won't need to be amended. It's simply, we'll be aware of those changes, and then we'll process the modifications accordingly. Does that make sense?
Yes.
I don't know how practical it is, but it makes sense. If we're trying to simplify, why do we still have Ojai and Thousand Oaks with their own area plans? And why do we have the Public Works dealing with a separate ordinance regarding public right-ofways, if we're trying to simplify all this?
Maybe I'll jump in, I'll handle the right-ofway issue. Aaron can handle the general plan. Permitting of wireless facilities in the right-ofway is legally unique. There's a California law, Public Utility Code 7901, that gives wireless providers a legal right to put their facilities in the right-ofway. And so the only limitation on that right is if their facilities unreasonably interfere with the right-ofway itself. And so many take the position, or view that regulatory arena as being outside even of a zoning ordinance. So it's unique in that respect, it's, because the zoning rules don't really even apply there. And so those types of permits are processed ministerially. And so the biggest issue with those permits is whether or not they unreasonably interfere with the right-ofway. And so our Public Works Department has been looking at those issues for a long time, and they require an encroachment permit if you want to put those types of facilities in the right-ofway already. And so the thought of the county back in 2013, when Public Works basically went first with their ordinance, was Public Works is already doing this, the main issue is compatibility with the right-ofway, and so they should be issuing these permits for these types of facilities in the right-ofway. And then, as Aaron touched upon before, the types of wireless facilities in the right-ofway are typically antennas and small equipment that's placed on telephone poles, and then they lay fiber optics wires within the right-ofway itself. And so it's really also specialized equipment. And so I'm sure the county could have built that permitting process into our overall wireless ordinance, but it would have been kind of a unique type of permitting environment, even within our ordinance, which would just make the whole thing even more complicated. So the county's thought was, let's just break that off, let's do that one first, and then us, the planning, needed more time to come up with our, you know, overall wireless ordinance for everywhere outside of the right-ofway.
So Public Works is better suited to handle health and safety issues within the right-ofway? Is that basically it?
Exactly right, and there's not much discretion involved anyways. There's limited public hearing rights and whatnot, so, right, so the thought was that they're best handled to, best suited to handle that type of permit.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
I have a question.
Yeah, just a follow-up.
Excuse me, a follow-up question to Mr. Barnes. So a commercial wireless company, well, are there commercial wireless, well, let me back up, a commercial wireless facility can be on a public right-ofway that would come under Public Works' existing plan or ordinance?
Yes, they can, and like I said, they even have a right to, if their facilities are such that they don't unreasonably interfere and meet the other standards. And so our state, this is such a complicated legal arena, because, yeah, you have the federal rules, the state rules, and then the local land use rules. So in terms of the right-ofway, our state Public Utility Commission has basically occupied that field, and said, look, if you're a wireless or telephone company, you have a right to put your facilities in the right-ofway, because it's like any other type of utility, it's like a telephone line. And so not much, there's not a whole lot of discretion involved at the county level in regulating that kind of thing.
So the provider has that option to seek the right-ofway, the public right-ofway as a location versus some other part of the county?
Exactly, yeah. And I understand that the equipment's different, and it might have different uses, but, right, it's, they have that, they have that other option. You're exactly right.
Thank you.
Aaron, you wanted to respond to the general plan, Ojai and Thousand Oaks?
Yeah, I don't know, do you, either, do you want to pick that one?
Well, to respond very briefly, the reason why we addressed the area plan issues, as I mentioned earlier, is that those two area plans currently have provisions in them related to wireless. Now, we suspect that one reason is because those two area plans also have overlays for this scenic resource protection overlay zone. Pyro also does, but does not have associated regulations. I'm not sure what the history is of those regulations, but it seemed important to us to address them as part of this process. And essentially, what we did was, we removed most of the development standards, if not all the development standards, from the area plans, because they were no longer necessary. And if you look at the staff report, you'll see a staff explanation that tells you exactly which sections of the new non-coastal zoning ordinance take care of and address the issue that was in the area plans. Now, the area plans also had some policies, which, as long as they didn't conflict with anything that we were doing, we left them the same. There were a couple of adjustments, because some of the language wasn't quite consistent with the federal law, so we made some tweaks there. And the main thing that really did remain, though, is the, those area plans currently have some height restrictions. And we did not, we elected to retain those height restrictions based on some input that we had from various members of the community regarding those height restrictions. But one of the other reasons is just that those communities appear to be quite sensitive about height, and with the new federal law, someone could come in and raise it up another 20 feet. So it seemed to be prudent, at least for this point in time, to leave those height restrictions in place. Hopefully, that answers, probably more than answers the question.
Thank you.
Commissioner Dukas, you had questions with staff?
Yes, just going through top to bottom. On the height limit on amateur radio, you said that it was 40 feet. Is that the antenna height, or just the structure height?
Well, so there technically is no height limit on amateur radio, but to get a zoning clearance, it would be up to 40 feet, and that's measured from the base of the facility on the ground to the top point of the pole, or mast, or antenna, whichever is highest.
It's my experience that local authorities have no jurisdiction whatsoever on the antenna, it's only on the structure. Am I incorrect?
Well, so the antenna and the structure under the code are basically one in the same, they're a ground-mounted antenna. So basically, you know, the wireless ordinance itself does not apply to these amateur radio antennas. There are provisions for how to measure the antennas in the ordinance, so if they are considered a wireless facility, then they're measured from the ground to the highest point of the top of the mast. I do not, I'm not aware of any regulations differentiating between, differentiating the antenna and the mast, in terms of the FCC regulations, in terms of our ordinance, they are considered one in the same, a wireless communications facility.
It's an argument I've heard, is it something that county council wants to weigh in on, or no?
I'm sorry, that...
That there, that, I've heard the argument that local governments just have jurisdiction over the structure upon which the antenna or array, or, you know, is placed, that the local government has no authority over any part of the antenna itself, the type, the configuration, and I'm wondering if the height.
I haven't seen, I'm not aware of that, that preemption of our lenient authority.
Okay.
I think it's the technology, the, so the power output from the antenna, we cannot regulate, the type of antenna that's used, we cannot regulate. The government can regulate, local governments can regulate the shape and the form of the antenna, the visual components of the antenna is allowed per the Telecommunications Act, I believe.
If the commissioner will allow, I want to concur with you, because I dealt with that last century in a municipality, and one of the issues was that we could not. So we imposed that had to be retractable, so we could modify it that way, but the height to which the amateur radio could go was not under our purview. So the solution we came up with was to make it retractable. So I concur with you that there's something out there.
Yeah, I don't, I don't know what the law is, but I know what the argument has been.
No, but I remember that quite clearly.
Okay. The second thing is...
We have a technical consultant who may be able to answer that, too. Andy, do you have a response for that at all?
Well, I just said...
Wait, you have to be...
Andy Sevold.
Sorry, Andy Sevold, I'm a consultant for the county. I have to go back and look at PRB 1, but my understanding is that that's a true statement, that it is up to the tower height, and the antenna above that is not included.
Thank you for that clarification. Then, moving forward on my little list here, the 40-foot limit on the TO plan, what other elements of the TO plan, and what kind of coordination with the city of Thousand Oaks did the county have?
Okay, well, so the city of Thousand Oaks sent in a comment letter regarding the ordinance, so they reviewed it, and they sent in some comments, some of the comments were accepted. One of them was such that we should include a broad policy or development standard, saying that antenna height should be limited to as low as possible. Their other comments are reflected in Exhibit 6, and so, but they were relatively minor overall.
Okay.
We also presented, conducted one outreach meeting in the city of Thousand Oaks at the... the sheriff's station up there. I'm not, I don't think any city individuals were in attendance, but we were, we were there.
Okay. Could you define "public viewpoint"?
Yeah, it's a, it's a road, a park, a trail, anywhere that is open to the public.
Okay, but it doesn't include a community?
Well, it does not include.
A neighborhood?
It does not include houses in the community, but includes all public areas within the community. You know, maybe more precise if I read you the definition for "public viewpoint," which we have. Let's see here. Public roads and recreational areas such as parks, beaches, trails, Ventura County regional local trails that are accessible to the general public, sidewalks, those types of things.
Okay, not the freeway, not the?
Yeah, it would include, freeway's a public road.
Okay, bike path, okay.
Trails, yeah.
All right. I have a problem with stealth and its definition. I just feel like it's, I can't, I can't think of the word, that it's misleading. These, is there, was there ever a notion to have a more accurate? And I think of stealth as something you don't know that it's there. There are areas where it's put on a building, you don't see the antenna come out, you don't see any shadow, it's, it's just this seamless part of a shopping center. Those are truly stealthy. And then, we have tack-ons that can be, you know, various sizes, these micro cells that are not stealthy at all. Is there another more straightforward name that was ever thought of, or?
Well, so some ordinances use camouflage as a way to portray these facilities, however, that implies, tends to imply some type of paint or coloration, where that's not necessarily the case either. The idea is that you, you know, if these are mounted on a building, that, yeah, the passerby would not notice them on the building because they blend in so well to the architectural features.
But you showed examples of things that are, that are very common, that are not very noticeable, they're minor, or they're minimally visually intrusive, but they're certainly not stealth. Stealth implies that it's truly hidden from view, completely hidden from view.
Commissioner Dukas, I think that in the, there's a hierarchy in the system and in the definitions, and it will, in the industry, the only, the only types of facilities that are truly hidden are usually building-concealed facilities, ones that are just concealed completely within a different structure. Stealth facilities typically are not 100% concealed, and that's, seems to be an industry standard, we've set up our definitions in that way, so there's a hierarchy. Ideally, you wouldn't really notice it. I mean, certainly if you're driving along the road and there's a tree there. One of the things we've done is to try to make sure that if it's a tree, that there are surrounding trees that look just like it, that its height is not excessively higher than the other trees, so that a normal person probably wouldn't notice it. It doesn't mean, however, that you absolutely wouldn't see it and would never notice that it's there.
Okay, well, it caught my attention that we're using the word stealth, and I wondered if it was a term of art in the industry, and it sounds like it was. So if, because I do think that it's misleading, people do have a common idea of what stealth means, and the things that this ordinance will accommodate certainly are not stealthy, so I have objection to that. What is the difference between colocation and clustering?
Well, colocation is mounting wireless communication facilities on existing communication facilities. Clustering is putting more than one ground-mounted facility on the same site, so it's based on the site rather than the tower.
Okay. What ends up happening is an unintended consequence of a large visual impact in certain areas where you have a willing landowner, someone who is willing to lease their property, and there are, there are areas that are concentrated with this clustering and colocation. Is that something that the county views favorably or unfavorably?
Well, you know, there are advantages to clustering, includes each facility does not require an access road, there's less grading overall, the fire clearance is a big issue, so there's 100-foot setbacks for facilities that you can walk, one can walk into. So if you have this multiple ground-mounted facilities spread out, the clearance can be quite damaging to the habitat. So overall, the county looks at clustering as a, as a method of reducing environmental impacts. However, we understand that there are concerns about clustering in some areas. Obviously, you know, clustering may be good in some areas and may not be so great in other areas, and therefore, there is a provision that, you know, unless the area plans decide otherwise, clustering is included on the preferred locations list.
I'm thinking specifically in Thousand Oaks, there's an area called Rasno Peak that's within the county's jurisdiction, but it serves, you know, the entirety of Thousand Oaks. So I think Mr. Barnes and I were talking earlier about how there's a trade-off and there's a balance. What will the implementation of these guidelines do to that area where there's colocation and clustering, and it's, it has a broad mix of antenna up there, too?
Yeah, so the ordinance would essentially require Rasno Peak to demonstrate that those facilities are necessary for their communications purposes under the Telecommunications Act, and that they cannot be blended or concealed any more than they are already, and once the applicant demonstrates that, they can be renewed.
Can those antenna heights be increased?
Well, so that would be a modification, that would be a discretionary decision, and that would be decided at that time. They can be increased or they can be decreased. They may be asked to show some analysis as to why the heights are needed, as they are today. If that analysis is insufficient, then they may be asked to lower the antenna heights.
It's been my observation that they don't, they don't, there are never less, there are never fewer, there are always more. So that's, that's my observation, being there for over 20 years. And what does the ordinance say regarding the county's ability to, I understand the rollout of coverage, and that we need to step aside and allow coverage, but there's a whole other issue called capacity. What does the county's ordinance say about that?
So capacity is interpreted to also be covered under the Telecommunications Act. Basically, capacity is, you know, when a school gets, gets, ends for the day, all the students run out, try to get on their cellphones, or if you're at a stadium or something, everyone's on their cellphones. While there may be cell service to that area, it may get overloaded with multiple users. So the capacity is more antennas in that area to provide data transmission at peak times. That is covered under the act. The applicant would be asked to demonstrate that the increased capacity is needed. Ideally, this would be some sort of a chloropleth map showing hot spots and cool spots and the need for increased capacity in a certain area. That would be demonstration of the need for the facility, and that would, you know, that would assist their application and be a complete item.
Last, last question. How many service providers do we have in Ventura County?
We have, I know that Verizon and AT&amp;T and T-Mobile are all active, Sprint, basically all the major corporations are active in the county. The major ones, I believe, are AT&amp;T and Verizon. There's also tower owners such as American Tower Company and Crown Castle that lease the, you know, horizontal or vertical space on their facilities.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Commissioner Rodriguez?
Yeah, briefly. How are, under your definitions, how are Red Mountain and South Mountain defined? Are those colocations or are those clusters?
Well, so they could be both, basically. A lot of the towers, you know, cell towers that you see today, usually there's multiple antennas, multiple carriers on most of them. That makes a lot of sense from an environmental perspective. And then, basically, if the towers, if there's multiple towers on one parcel, then they are clustered. So you could have multiple carriers, multiple antennas on one tower, and multiple towers on one parcel, so you have colocation and clustering happening together. I'm not familiar exactly with the parcel configurations, but it's reasonable to assume that when you see a clustered facility in a rural, open space or axon with large parcels, that they're probably all on one site, it could be considered a clustered facility, clustered site.
Those are major communications locations, obviously, in the county. Okay.
Yeah, they're, they're large sites. The ordinance has not proposed to have them removed at all, they can continue their operations, they just have to show that they are minimizing the environmental impacts and that, and that the height is necessary to send and receive their signals.
Thank you.
Any other questions of staff? Chair has just sent a very simple one since Commissioner Dukas covered my other questions, is on the recommended actions, Item G, were we repealing the guidelines?
Right.
My concern here is, we send the recommendation forward to the Board of Supervisors, but we repealed the guidelines. So if the Board of Supervisors denies the recommended actions, we have nothing to operate with it. So it might be a little hair splitting, but.
Oh, yeah, thanks for raising the issue. Just to clarify, your commission's, your commission's role today is to make recommendations regarding this whole package to the board, and so you wouldn't actually be repealing anything today, you would be asking the board to make that repeal along with its adoption of the new rules.
Okay, so we wouldn't be, la la, nothing.
Right, yeah, thank you. Oh, and just to follow up on Commissioner Dukas' earlier question about regulation of amateur radio antenna heights, the FCC was actually asked to preempt that area and disallow local agencies from enacting those types of regulations. The FCC had declined to do so, actually, a few different times. And so the FCC's policy, it's called one of limited preemption, and so the theme in terms of local regulations is that they have to reasonably accommodate, and they can't go further than necessary to achieve the aesthetic and health and safety and other land use rules that, or land use objectives of local agencies. So we can, just to sum up, we can impose height restrictions as long as they don't, they're not reasonably, they don't allow amateur radios to reasonably operate. And so it's fuzzy language, but that's, that's the state of the law there.
Okay, we've heard staff, we've questioned staff according to our guidelines of the Board of Supervisors. This is time for disclosures, since we have a new commissioner. Purpose of the disclosures, Commissioner, is if you've received any information or testimony outside of the public packet that we have received that the public has no knowledge of, so.
I'm sorry to cut in, and I, I'm sorry for not mentioning this here, I mentioned it to Chair Rodriguez while he was still the chair. Because this is a legislative action, there's no need for disclosures. And so it's, it's only if there's an actual adjudicatory, quasi-adjudicatory proceeding, like a use permit that's before you, that's required. But for today's hearing, our land use rule say that disclosures are not needed.
Okay, so if one of us has talked to a Verizon representative, it's not important?
Well, you don't have to disclose it, it might have been important, but.
All right, all right. All right, just for our new commissioner, that's the standard procedure that we, once we receive the staff report, then our disclosures, if we've received any additional information that the public has no knowledge of. All right, since we've already heard from the applicant, and well-spoken, Mr. Ensign, I appreciate your responses. At this time, we have been at this for an hour and a half. Those of you that have parked in what's called Lot G, is if you exit the building to the right, it's a three-hour time limit. You might want to move your vehicle. We're going to take a 15-minute break, and what we'll do then is come back and open up the public hearing. We stand recessed until 10:15. Oh, yeah. Staff ready to go? County Council ready to go? And is Madam Clerk ready to go? I knew who runs this show.
Yeah.
I may not be a smart man, but I'm no fool. All right, all right. When we last left this episode, again, this is a county thing, but I'm trying to keep it simple for me, we had staff, so now, does the applicant have anything further to add, given the fact you have right of rebuttal at the end? Okay, thank you. All right, then I will open the public hearing, and according to the rules given to us as a planning commission by the Board of Supervisors, this is the way it goes. Those that have marked their cards in support of the recommended actions will speak first. Those who oppose the recommended actions will speak next, and after that, the applicant will be allowed to rebut or give concluding comments. All right. With that, I have one question, I have a Leslie Dagel from Verizon, you didn't mark whether you support or oppose the recommended action?
Modified.
You're for it?
Modified.
Modified, okay. That's what I like, firm commitments, make it a definite maybe, all right. All right. So this will be the order. The first speaker will be a Marty Wall, followed by Dan Rovetto, and then Leslie. Please, when you come up, give your name and address, whether it be business or home.
Good morning. Marty Wall, 21301 Candice Place, Chatsworth, that's my home address. I'm the Vice Director of the ARRL, the National Association for Amateur Radio, representing some 700,000 amateurs in the U.S. and several thousand here in Ventura County. When we first read this ordinance, we had a number of concerns, the first of which was that the amateur radio facilities that were not associated with the residence were lumped in with commercial facilities, which they're absolutely not, they're prohibited by law from having any commercial impact. Second, that the application requirements included many items which were either inapplicable to amateur radio, or would be so costly as to constitute a prohibitive burden, which is illegal under federal and state law. Third, that the development standards themselves included a number of provisions that would render our antennas ineffective or otherwise be inapplicable. We express these concerns to the department. Staff met with us on several occasions to listen to our concerns, they did make some changes. The basic definitional issue is still there. What the staff committed to do was to abandon and come up with a, an application process that would eliminate those items that are inapplicable with the objective of making it the least burdensome, which is a requirement under federal and state law. So at this point, we await, we're still not happy with the definitions, but we're taking staff at their word. We are going to await the results of their efforts in coming up with specific application processes, which will be applicable to amateur radio and in an residential area. Thank you.
Come on, just see if there's any questions. Any questions, the Speaker?
So what are the inapplicable standards that you still have reservations about?
Things like FCC, you know, certain FCC requirements that do not apply to amateur radio at all in terms of coverage. The FCC does not regulate what an amateur station must or must not do. It's largely an experimental activity for the purpose of technical advancement and public service, and, you know, if we change an antenna, for example, that shouldn't result in a huge fee. We experiment with antennas all the time. When one is less effective, we try another one. So those are just a few, but we gave a list of those that we had concerns about to staff.
And are you satisfied with the current language, then? Or do you have suggested modifications?
We provided suggested modifications to staff, they preferred to handle that in a modified application process, so we are going to stand down until such time as we see the results of that process, and we believe they're going to give it their best efforts.
Okay, thank you.
Before you step down, I did have a question of staff, it looks like you want to answer that anyway. to answer that anyway, is between here, the recommendation, and the approval, because then it's the ordinance, what does staff see that's going to happen?
Well, I, I first want to really recognize the importance of the amateur radio operators in Ventura County, right? And there's no way that I wanted to run afoul of the group. We, we did contact them, we set up a working group, because it's a broad ordinance, and we have a little bit of an issue with, here's the ordinance as, as already written, right, and the board didn't direct us to really make changes to amateur radio operators, right, that they need a permit at 40 feet, a zoning clearance. But we did want to recognize the fact that, we wanted to really narrow down what we were going to ask them, just the basic questions, right? So we didn't want to hand them a 20-page application, is what you would do if somebody wanted to build a new, you know, 50-foot cell tower in the county, we wanted to be very specific. So Erin and Rosemary have been working with this group, and we're going to very carefully not only narrow down just exactly what we need and not ask them for, for anything else, but, you know, really ensure that the fee that is charged at the zoning clearance stage is the least fee possible, right? The, the board requires a fee offset for our time. If it costs, you know, half hour to, to prepare it, it would only be a half hour charge. So I want to be very recognizing of this group, and then recognizing that our staff really does want to, to work with them, and I'm confident that we're going to be able to accomplish everything that we said that we would do in the application process, which is what we've committed to. We would, we would convert the ordinance to guidelines and then applications for both the wireless industry and for the amateur radio industry.
Are you comfortable with that one, sir?
Yes, thank you.
Okay. Also understand, this is a recommendation which carries a ton of weight, obviously, but if you feel at the point in time when this is heard by the Board of Supervisors, you do have an opportunity to speak again.
Thank you.
Okay. All right, thank you very much. Yo, I'm sorry, sir?
Marty, before you leave...
I'm sorry.
Hi. Just, just, I guess just for the record, could you briefly comment on amateur radio activities as it relates to public safety and emergency interface?
Well, having a ready supply of trained operators who, who operate their own equipment at their own cost, ready to go to provide backup for the public in general, certainly for agencies, but also for communities and individuals. I, I personally, for example, I train with a group that provides backup for all the county hospitals in Los Angeles, communicating with the county's Department of Health Services with respect to hospital status, bed capacity, and so on. I'm also the Training Officer for the L.A. City Fires Auxiliary Communication Service Program, wherein if there's a problem with our 800 megahertz internal communication for dispatch, we can help take care of those dispatch, dispatch messages. We drill and practice that on a regular basis. Those are just a few examples. You have some people here in the audience, including your city radio, or county radio officer, who can give you more detail on, on what happens right here in Ventura County.
Fine, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you again, sir, we appreciate you coming down. Our next speaker is Dan Rovetto. Again, name and address, and then Leslie, you'll be after that.
Dan Rovetto, 1150 South Olive Street, Los Angeles 90012. Commissioner, staff, good morning. My name is Dan Rovetto, and I'm the Director of External Affairs for AT&amp;T. We would like to extend our compliments to the county staff for their excellent work in doing a job in creating and crafting this, this ordinance. We also appreciate staff efforts to balance infrastructure needs with aesthetics and other issues as well. We do, however, have a few concerns that we would like to share with you this morning. Regarding propagation maps, we would like to suggest a language change from quote, "minimum height necessary to provide adequate service," to optimal height to close significant gap in coverage capacity. This is more technically accurate, since height minimum, maximum is sensitive to coverage and capacity objectives. We can only provide the height at which our coverage objectives will be met, not adequate service provided. We believe adequate service is too relative of a term. With regard to alternative site analysis, how will we know what co-location opportunities are available in the area? Will the county be providing us with a list of carrier locations? Individual carriers at this time have no way of knowing the locations of other carrier deployments. Staff did mention the development of a website identifying new facilities, but we are unclear if it also will identify existing ones as well. Regarding rooftop mounted wireless communication facilities, not exceeding the height limit for the zone by more than six feet is unattainable if the building was built to the height limit of the zone. Other municipalities have adopted a 10-foot from the roof deck as the height maximum without a height waiver or variance. If rooftop concealment is preferred, it needs to be more developmentally friendly, we believe. In the site restoration section, we would respectfully request at at least 180 days to fully restore the property to the pre-construction condition, reasonable wear and tear exempted. We are also concerned about the definition of quote, "modification to wireless facilities" end quote. It appears to include routine maintenance and operations that should require no planning input. It would be impractical for all parties involved if a carrier needs to obtain county permission for every maintenance visit. And finally, regarding the 10-year term on CUP, we and the other carriers have already expressed our concerns in this area. Potential removal of sites requires a comprehensive reevaluation of a carrier's network, which is an overly burdensome endeavor. We would like the 10-year term to be removed. Again, on behalf of AT&amp;T, we appreciate the opportunity to share our concerns and look forward to working with the county. Thank you.
Are there any questions of the gentleman? Oh, okay, who would like to go first? Mr. Rodriguez?
The 10-year removal, you want to unload the CUP?
Yes, sir. That would be our request.
That would be your request. Chances of getting it are very slim.
I understand that, but I'd like to ask...
And the reason for that, really?
Well, cellular industry has been working at, in this way for more than three decades, and it's not foreseeable that it will change anytime soon, certainly not within the next 10 years.
Doesn't just the evolution of the technology necessitate changes and modifications?
I would say not necessarily.
Any other questions? I, I agree with him, and it, it has not, it does have to do with you, because it's a CUP. We deal with a lot of CUPs from rocks to this and other things, and we have found through our experience that, that being able in a reasonable period of time, for both your business output, but ours is the regulatory agency responsible for public safety, is that 10 years has come about, as far as review. That's why we usually give the director the ability, if you've been in compliance, you're meeting everything, you can come down and you get an extension of it, so that's reasonable. Again, it's just, otherwise, we have wound up with situations the county winds up holding the bag on. So just with that kind of... As far as the alternative sites issue, I'm somewhat in agreement with you, and this goes back to the Santa Barbara Sierra Club versus Hyatt in the early 90s, when as a private agency, your problem is, can I go to an alternative site? You don't have the power of eminent domain. So even though you can look at it, if Verizon or doesn't want you on their tower, it's not going to happen. So I can, I can see where you want to modify a little bit of that language, and we'll talk about that. So I'm empathetic to that particular... The rest of it, I'm going to defer to staff...
I have one more question.
As far as the languages you're proposing and the different terms like that.
I have a question. Is it your understanding, then, that the ordinance as drafted would include routine maintenance requiring permits?
Yes, that's our read of it.
Is that correct?
Uh, no, Commissioner Onstott, that's not our reading of the ordinance.
Okay, there's obviously a conflict between his interpretation and yours. Is there some reason why we can't even out this language so that he's, he should not have to get a permit and not have to worry about it? I mean, it should be something we can resolve, I would assume.
I would have to... We, we did have this comment in, in the letter that was submitted by Verizon Wireless, and there is a response from staff to this comment in Exhibit 12...
Right.
That's fairly detailed. It, I may also refer to my case planner on this, but basically, if someone just is maintaining their facility, they can come and do that, they don't need a permit. But there is a distinction, if someone wants to replace the equipment, and it's going to be, there's a possibility that they might replace it with something that's significantly different than what was already there. In that kind of situation, then, we would reserve the right to take a look at that, they might need a permit adjustment. And that's one reason why we carefully described what you can get with a zoning clearance. But what I think the commonly-used notion of what routine maintenance is would not be, would not require a permit.
Okay. Obviously, that doesn't put you at ease.
Well, it sounds good. Our attorneys beg to differ on that, and we would request maybe some further clarification in the language. That would be our request.
Okay. Well, we'll discuss that with the applicant when we get to that phase, and we'll bring this up, thank you.
Thank you.
We'll go forward there. All right, thank you. I'm just going to try it, Daigle?
Yes.
Oh, okay. Name and address, please.
Uh, yes, good morning, Chair Wesner, congratulations on your election today.
I hope so.
And pleased to be here before the commission and its members. My name is Leslie Daigle, Verizon Wireless is located on Sand Canyon in Irvine, so came up this morning from Orange County. And to start off with, we, you know, find this 6409, 6409, the Spectrum Act and middle-class tax relief, and so what happened was, the federal government needed offset to give out tax relief. So we went to the communications industry and said, well, where can we find this, these funds? And so they auctioned off additional spectrum. And so we are licensed now with additional spectrum, and we continue to grow to meet consumer demand. And so along comes the, the Spectrum Act, which purpose is to facilitate co-location and modifications to accommodate new technologies. Now we have this technology, how can it be, be in, in a manner that is being facilitated by local government? So first, I want to start off with the common ground, in terms of the revisions that were suggested by your staff today, late in their presentation, we support those revisions. So they identified eliminating photos from the ordinance, we agree with that. It would be a problem to deny a facility because it didn't look like a photo, so we agree with, with that revision. We also agree with the, this future locations issue that they took up. We feel that it would be speculative and burdensome to get into future locations. So their recommendation on that, we support as well. Language on when the term expires, not having to do the latest technology, we, Verizon supports that as well. So those three issues identified by your staff, and we have worked with them, we appreciate them always reaching out to us. So in summary, those issues may be handled by deferring to the staff on those. This is new, no one's, no one's done this, so, and I think we can all appreciate, there may be ways to refine and improve what's presented. Our areas of objection are, first of all, definitions, and as Commissioner Dukas pointed out, you get into definitions, you can get into ambiguity and confusion. And so we would request that you not restate federal law and try to make a local definition of, of modification, and then not to expand the definitions. So you have this, this definition of concealment elements, and our position is that, that this could lead to ambiguity and confusion. So definitions are the issue, are, are first issue. The second is, as far as the Spectrum Act, we would, of course, appreciate if you simply referenced it. You know, we have this Spectrum Act, and not to try to, to restate that as well. The third area that was extensively discussed in the right-of-way ordinance, which came from the Department of Transportation and went directly to the Board of Supervisors, is the small cell technology exemptions. Clearly, small cells are, are going to be prominent in the future. Now that these macro sites are built, there'll now be an underlayerment of small cell technology. A lot of the new frequencies are designed to handle data, and for the first year, our customers are using data more than voice. So what we have is phones now are becoming texting, email devices, more, more so than using an actual voice, them for voice. So small cells are going to be the wave of the future, more of them in the future, and we believe that within your ordinance, that they have been erroneously referred to as a co-location, which they're not. So we would like to see some sort of an adminis, some sort of a process that further contemplates small cells. Then additionally, the issue of height. We think that we can add additional height and, and make it look acceptable, for example, cupolas. So it, you know, we understand this is not the final, final day here, but as we go forward, how can we address this height issue in a manner that meets the technical needs and also is, is not intrusive in terms of the community aesthetic? So we would like to consideration there. As far as the maintenance issue, if I may clarify that, from Verizon's perspective, the issue there is like-for-like. So if you go in, and we go in and we replace a faucet, let's say, because the current one is leaking or it's, it's inadequate. So maintenance, as we define it, is like-for-like, so if that provides any clarity there. So in summary, we agree with what your staff recommended, all on board with that Verizon is. And then our, our areas of differences are the definitions, the reference to the Spectrum Act, and then we believe that there needs to be additional consideration of small cell technology, height, and then clarification on this maintenance issue. So, thank you.
Any questions, Commissioner Dukas?
I can really relate to replacing the faucet, and I would have a lot to say if, yes, you can turn it on and off, and yes, you got hot and cold water, but it looked terrible in my family room. So when you're talking about replacing like-for-like, you're talking about the configuration of the antenna, the number, the size?
Yeah, we, we would go along with the same physical dimensions, so if it's, if it's two-by-two antenna, two-by-two faucet, then we would go, we would, we would stay within that threshold.
Okay, but there's something in the language of the ordinance that precludes you from doing that?
Jesus, I'm going to have him. Do you want to come up? He's actually a little bit more familiar with this particular issue.
Your name for the record, Chair?
Yes, Louis Torres, Director of External Affairs with Verizon.
Thank you.
So, um, we just want to make sure that the language is clear, that we are able to make modifications in terms of maintenance issues. It could be like-for-like, it could be maybe something smaller, but something that wouldn't increase the size of, you know, the structure outside of our application, you know, but most of maintenance is just to, you know, take wires out, cables in, making sure things are safe and, and secure. If we do do swapping of some antennas, you know, sometimes they're like-for-like, or they could be smaller, but we just want some, some clarity in the language that leads us to that conclusion.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
I have.
Commissioner Rodriguez?
Just a, just a general question as it relates to service. How are your transmission capabilities impacted in relation to their proximity to military facilities?
I don't have an exact answer to that, but we actually do place some of our antennas in military bases. As a matter of fact, we have some in Port Guiné, but I'm not sure on the technical aspects of how they interact with military frequencies.
I'm just curious, because obviously, we have a military bases here in the county, specifically Port Guiné, and it's surrounded pretty much by residential, and obviously the military transmits, and I don't, I won't get into the frequencies or the strengths of the signal, but obviously, I'm curious to know if there's an impact or over, an overlay, if you will, their signal onto commercial?
Uh, they have their own process for permitting, and that hasn't come up in terms of, you know, any impact on that. Like you said, they do have residential areas within the base that we provide service to, but to my knowledge, that hasn't come up, but I can double-check for you.
Yeah, I'd appreciate that.
Thank you.
Commissioner Dukas, you had a follow-up? Nope, thank you. Anything else, Leslie? Yep, okay. All right. Those are all those that are either for it or modified for it. We will now go, that have marked themselves against the recommended... This first one would be Professor... This first one would be Professor Marshall, followed by Tina Rasnow, Brian Rasnow, and then James Fortney. Name and address, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Trevor Marshall, 3423 Hill Canyon Avenue, Thousand Oaks, 32 years resident. Well, I want to first congratulate Aaron and the staff on a very, very complex job they've done in putting out a set of rules. I'm not really against the ordinance. I just want to talk about what can go wrong. This is the only Level 2 trauma center in Eastern County, Los Robles Hospital. And this photo is taken from the edge of the car park at Los Robles Hospital, in which are hidden some WCF antennas for AT&amp;T. And as Commissioner Dukas pointed out, this concept of stealth and hidden, let me suggest that these are hidden because none of the staff know they're there, none of the patients know they're there, and none of the visitors know they're there. Now, in particular, the ambulance drivers don't even know they're there. And yet, the ambulance drivers have to deliver the patients, who presumably are in need of immediate care. The ambulance is just turning left, it goes in behind and then parks alongside the, the first ambulance that's in there. There's an ambulance already in there, having discharged its patient out the back. This one's going to move around there. The WCF is tucked right in here, in the actual fascia of the, inside the actual fascia of the car park. And it's been working for two years. But we're doing quite a lot of research in the effects of waves on biological systems. And on 4th of January, our equipment started to go funny. All the meters started to go off-scale, and we found that, in fact, it was because the power in the wireless communication facility at Los Robles Hospital had gone up by a factor of 250 times. 250 times increase in power, sometime presumably over the holiday break, but before January 4th, when it started making itself apparent in our equipment. So we went to the Thousand Oaks Council to try and find out what had happened, because there were new frequencies being used, a new type of communication called LTE was being used, and yet the old transmitters were still operating as well. So the number of transmitters has doubled, the number of antennas has presumably doubled, but we don't really know where they're located or what is there, because when we went to the Thousand Oaks Council, planning, asking them for, to pull the file, let's have a look and see, we found there was no record whatsoever of any modification to the 2011, 2012 approvals. So why would they want to increase power 250 times? Because that's got to be an increased risk on the patients, particularly desperately ill patients. And we found out just about a week later, because AT&amp;T made an announcement that they're now going to do with these new equipment, with the LTE equipment installed to provide broadband and communications, what they're going to do is television broadcast to the home, using a new type of LTE multicast, which allows them to stream hundreds of channels all at once to a broad area, to thousands of users in that broad area. Totally new use, quite apart, in my opinion, quite apart from personal communications technologies, and yet using the privileges of, that they've been given for placing those WCF at the hospital. And I assume the hospital and patients are just viewed as collateral damage for the extra coverage. I don't really have time to, to go into this slide in detail. I was privileged to be invited to UNESCO head office in Paris in October last year. There was a seminar on the way that waves interfere with biological systems, which was hosted by Luc Montagnier, the Nobel Laureate, who discovered that HIV caused AIDS, and a number of very competent academics from Europe were talking about exactly how the radio waves interfere with the operation of biological systems, way beyond what we can get to here. And I'll skip that slide as well, which was showing copying of DNA from one test tube to another when an RF signal was present. And I'll go to this one. Look, science doesn't work by counting papers. I see that the planning staff commented that many scientific studies on safety reported evidence of harmful effect from cell phones, but there's also a seemingly equal number of studies that are inconclusive or show no significant harmful effects. If you go to Amazon, you can buy a book, get all the facts, HIV does not cause AIDS. You can buy AIDS, the HIV Myth from Amazon, and yet this man had the singular courage to speak out and say, I have found a virus, a retrovirus, which I think causes AIDS, and this is why. And as a result of that, the drugs were created for highly-active anti-eretoviral therapy that has now taken away the death sentence for most aged patients. So what sort of studies were omitted from staff discussion? Here is one of them. This is from the California Department of Health Services. In 2002, a reported hypersensitivity to electromagnetic fields in California, which concludes that 3.2% of Californians report hypersensitivity to EMS. Yet if you look at the report that the staff just gave you, you'll find that they, they ignored totally the residents that had said that they felt they were being made ill by these space station locations. The staff just rejected it on, on the basis of no conclusive evidence. Well, you know, there's a problem with that. That's not the way that change happens in science. It happens gradually and incrementally. So what does this hypersensitivity that the California Department of Health Services was asking about, what does it look like? What were they asking about? Here is a paper which was just published in September of 2014, talking about base transmitting station antenna, and actually, the WCF, as we would call it. And the symptoms of hypersensitivity were nausea, headache, dizziness, irritability, discomfort, nervousness, depression, sleep disturbance, memory loss, lowering of libido, libido, sorry, were all significant, statistically significant in the inhabitants near the antenna. And their suggestion was that cellular phone antenna should be sited no closer than 300 meters to populations. Well, oops, 70 feet is not 300 yards. And I wonder whether this patient, who might be suffering from cardiovascular or some other brain-related disorder, is in that 3.2% and is likely to be harmed or not. So as I said, staff recommend that community members who express strong opinions that WCF can cause harmful effects on humans should be ignored. And yet California says, no, at least 3.2% think that they are being affected. And they're the ones that are aware that they're being affected. You can't read in the newspapers, are you being affected? Here's a checklist. These are people that had to go themselves or had their physician say, you have EHS. Staff didn't report any of the harms, obviously, that are in the exhibits. Look, Ventura County is a very special place. I came here 32 years ago, and I've seen it change a lot over that time. But it's retained its focus on community. It's a wonderful place to bring up your kids, to bring up your grandkids. And that's a very slow process. As I said, 32 years we've been in our residence. Yet companies like AT&amp;T, Verizon, I guess, make decisions very quickly. They make them every month. Medical science changes every day. A new paper arrives on my desk every day that I've gotta read. And yet, we're talking about a 1996 law? We didn't even have a human genome in 1996. How can the FCC be, the FCC and the engineers, the FCC asked for safety information, because FCC did not ask the AMA. The AMA has a position on lack of safety of, of radio frequency. But they weren't asked for it. They asked the ITRIPOLI, the engineers, is this safe? And of course, the engineers regurgitated what they felt about it being safe based on, on heating effect. But this county can't afford to be bullied by a 15-year-old legal precedent. In 2000, I think, was the legal precedent that was quoted for why we can't consider the health effects of this base station sighting. Look, all that has to happen is that the carriers have to be more intelligent when they select the power that they're using in these installations and not just blast it fall out, in my opinion. So I think the negative, negative declaration must be corrected. Somebody's got to start talking sometime. In many ways, you need the canary to start singing in the coal mine and say, rather than, does the project have environmental effects that will cause substantial adverse effects on human beings, either directly or indirectly? The responsible answer that I feel staff should have given is, we cannot be sure. There are a heck of a lot of papers which say there is harm, and there are a lot of papers that were unable to reproduce that. But there should really be an X in both sides, I think, and commentary in there explaining the safety is not at all clear anymore. And when we're talking about the safety of our community, the safety of elderly citizens in our community, such as myself, safety of the, the youngsters, it really does matter. If we send them to hospital and they have to pass 70 feet away from a hidden WCF, that is a big deal for a county like Ventura County and a city like Thousand Oaks. The other thing that really strikes me about this ordinance is that nowhere are the carriers liable. In other words, the carrier will try and avoid liability for increasing the power 250 times, because, as I say, we had a permit to put the equipment there. You know, there doesn't seem to be any responsibility being allocated in the ordinance to say, you, as carriers, are responsible for making sure that it's a, a, a good level of power that meets your propagation map requirements, but does not risk harm to the residents. And sanctions are needed with teeth, like when something like this happens, there's got to be, the, the companies will continue to go around the regulations if there's any way they can do that. I didn't see any sanctions with teeth. So let's talk about where we are today. I've just got a couple of slides left. There is a World Health Organization expert group on health effects of electromagnetic fields, which include radio fields, from the CWF. And in September 2014, it put out its latest draft document, which is an updated report examining over 1,000 papers. There were many more papers, many which were rejected, of course, as being insufficient. But look, the draft contains 178 pages on how waves affect the human brain, and that is our particular interest. How does it affect the brain? There are 329 pages on links with cancers, because there's been a lot of money poured into studies on cancers. 47 pages on cardiovascular system, how it affects the heart. 47 pages on interference with reproductive development, and 38 pages on interactions with eyes, ears, and CNS. And yet, none of this found its way into staff hands, apparently, so that they could look and see, you know, is this real or not? Are these people that are telling us that they're being hurt? Are they just malingers or are they canaries? This is from the New York Times, and it's highlighting the fact that the brain controls the immune system. In fact, the brain controls immune disease. This is very new knowledge. The last three years, this has come up, although Feinstein's been working on this for several decades. But the proof was in place about three years ago. Now there are, with the FDA in trials, a little implant here which goes next to the nerve from the brain to the body. It changes the signals in the vagus nerve and brings relief to rheumatoid arthritis sufferers. So, so a study going on in Europe of the same technology for Crohn's disease. This is a big deal. The brain controls blood glucose concentrations and therefore the onset of diabetes. It controls the immune system and all the autoimmune and chronic inflammatory conditions, and it controls the cardiovascular system. That is scientific pragma right now, and even in the New York Times. And finally, let, just let me finish with musing about the signage requirements, because there are no signs at the hospital. And the, the staff are calling for FCC compliant signage, and I tried to figure out what would be on an FCC compliant sign, and I came up with warning, inadequate setbacks surrounding the WCF at this hospital. Shouldn't we call for honest signing? Warning, we can't be sure you'll not be made sick by the cellphone towers hidden in this hospital. Maybe that would get some reaction from the ambulance drivers. Who knows? Thank you very much indeed.
Thank you, Professor. Hang on. Are there any questions to the professor?
I assume the hospital, not discount anything you're saying, but I assume the hospital authorized the installation of those facilities.
The documents in the, the council that I did see from 2011, actually, none of them mentioned the hospital by name. They were all owners of property and presumably owners of buildings. I mean, the hospital is probably leasing its facilities from some other company. You know how accountants do things these days. I don't know anyone at the hospital that's aware of this.
Thank you. Any other questions? Just so you know, my understanding, though, hospitals are regulated by the state under an entity called GCHS, where they monitor infectious control, MRIs, things like that. So, and maybe one of the areas, since we don't contract, control Thousand Oaks, the city, but however, the, the issue might be under that purview rather than this one. So just a, just a point of reference.
Yes, Mr. Chairman. The problem is that the new LTE equipment requires very specialist detection capability. You can't just use the old recording devices, the old measuring devices that you used on the PCS of 2011, 2012. You need totally new measuring instruments to be able to measure the LTE. So even if they were monitoring it on a regular basis, they probably wouldn't have picked it up.
I understand, and my point is, is that may fall under that state agency's purview.
Sure, sure. And, and I'll go and have a chat with them, but because of the time pressures here, I only got a few days' notice of this hearing. I figured I better get this all in order.
Okay. Thank you.
Didn't I hear somewhere that there is a federal preemption and there's an RF standard of 1/50th of whatever the threshold for health is?
Yes, yes, that's, that's the-
Can't you go to the feds over this?
Can I go to the feds?
Yes.
You know, I, I, first and foremost, are part of a community. And in this community, there are Amgen and Baxter and, you know, lots of people I can talk to over this, but could I go to the feds? Actually, I have spoken to our representative.
Maybe staff could help us out. If this is regulated, and these people are supposed to check the RF, there must be someone he can talk to about this.
Right. This is why I was suggesting in the negative declaration, but we can't be sure. Give us some advice.
Staff, any help? Who can he complain to?
Our consultant, Andrew Sebold, will respond to this question.
Come ahead, sir. Don't go away, sir.
Thank you. First of all, the Federal Communications Commission has a field engineer in Los Angeles. He is available for any issues like this. A case needs to be made that there is a question, but I am fairly sure that AT&amp;T, Verizon, and all the rest of the operators abide by the federal rules on their licenses for the amount of power they're allowed to transmit. Now, if they add more radios on more different frequencies, they're going to transmit on more different portions of the spectrum, but they're not going to raise their power level by 250% on one transmitter. And the cumulative effect spread across a wide piece of spectrum is no more than it is from one. 70 feet from a cellular antenna is very, very acceptable. Eight feet from a cellular antenna is where the FCC says the danger point is and not beyond that.
But what you're telling me is, there is an agency or instrumentality for which he can't address this issue?
Correct. He can call the engineer in charge at the Los Angeles- He can call the engineer in charge at the Los Angeles Field Office of the FCC and file a complaint.
Thank you, sir.
Any other questions to the professor?
Can I?
Oh, certainly. Sure. Absolutely.
You know, I taught um university-level engineering from nineteen seventy to nineteen seventy-eight, when I transitioned to biology and clinical medicine. And I published a number of papers in Baseband Communication Technology, which is, of course, what we're now using in in these cell phones. I'm intimately familiar with what happened. And what happened was the new LTE equipment was put in at the power level that they felt they were licensed to, maybe on a pole three hundred yards away from a community. I don't know what the licensing requirements were, because nothing was filed with the city. And if nothing's filed with the city, how can anybody go to FCC and say, we've got a problem? But I I will take your advice, though.
Well, I would think if you're raising a health and safety problem, that someone in the city of Thousand Oaks would listen to you.
Well, I, I obviously worked it through with them first, and they're waiting for the county to come down with some suggestions in their ordinance.
They don't have any jurisdiction.
Absolutely honest. No, but they are waiting to see what the ordinance looks like. Um, I assume they've seen the the final draft now, so they've got a better idea. I'll go back to them, too, and talk with them. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Professor. We appreciate you. And thank you very much for the document. Do we enter these as an exhibit? Thank you. All right. Uh, Ms. Rasnow, Tina? Followed by Brian.
Good morning. I would like to request your indulgence to have Dr. Brian Rasnow speak first, because
I'm sorry, Dr. Who?
Brian Rasnow, my brother.
Oh, good, Brian, go first.
Yeah, to speak first.
Not a problem.
Okay, thank you.
We just call you up in the order which we receive the cards. That's, that's why.
Thank you. I'm um Dr. Brian Rasnow, one thousand South Ventu Park Road, Newberry Park, California. Resident and principal at the antenna site there. And um for your information, I have a PhD in physics from Caltech specializing in biophysics and bioelectricity, and I teach physics at California State University in Channel Islands. Excuse me. You acknowledge on page sixteen that the public's biggest concern about WCFs is perceived health risk and that federal law preempts you from um denying a facility that complies with the FCC standards. But there are practices that could be adopted to minimize potential risk. The ordinance here does the opposite. The public wants to know where radiation sources are, yet you're mandating hiding them. And as, as we saw in the last presentation again, um, you know, we're pretending that if you can't see this, it doesn't exist. The second best way to reduce exposure is distance. Uh, this is, again, physics. And uh if you put an antenna, for instance, eighty feet above the ground instead of forty feet, then the uh radiation levels drop by a factor of four. It's an inverse square law. And so, uh, but again, the ordinance puts a height limit on towers for its aesthetic purposes, so that completely goes contrary to any possible health effects or mitigating any possible health effects. Several shorter facilities, I'm quoting from the document on page forty-one, several shorter facilities are preferable to a larger one. That's, again, another example where aesthetics directly contradict public safety, because if you know of a single facility located somewhere, the public can make a choice to avoid it. And likewise, larger antennas restrict, generally restrict beams, uh, restrict the radiation pattern into narrower beams that, again, provide less um impact, less exposure to the public. So if you really care about public health and, again, our perceptions of health, uh, then these proposed changes are exactly opposite to what they should be. As a final note here, uh, in Europe, they exercise what's called a precautionary principle that the United States tends not to recognize as well. And uh it seems that that would be very prudent here. Uh, Europeans have used the precautionary prin- principle to pass laws of um managing the safety of GMO foods and other potential health risks where the scientific data is just ambiguous. We do not know. Another comment, uh, page twenty-four and five, I quote here, technological advancements increasingly yield smaller and less obtrusive facility designs, close quote. I believe that is an overgeneralization. It's certainly true for some cell sites, but not all. Uh, cell phones have migrated to higher frequencies, part of the challenge of measuring their uh impacts, and higher frequencies require smaller antennas. Again, the physics uh is there. But the latest 4G antennas at my antenna site are larger than the 3G and the three and a half G antennas that, that they supersede. And it is likely, I think, that initial rollouts of the subsequent generations of newer technology, the 5G, the 6G, that none of us, you know, can sort of anticipate directly. But these will be rolled out at remote mountain top sites that give very broad coverage. And it's only as that technology matures that, that, that those large sites are then broken down by the carriers into much smaller, these mini cells or se- uh smaller cells and then mini cells, so that the carriers can recycle their frequencies over subsequent hubs. But initially, this is always rolled out over big sites because there's a customer base to, to sort of justify multiple small sites. So I think that the trend that you're seeing with applications for smaller sites is a more cyclical trend of the industry and not a sort of monotonic trend that somehow technology is changing and we won't need big mountain top sites. Uh, another example are the ham radios, of course, where some of the uh longer wavelength antennas, they have to be big based on just the physics of radiation in order to do long distance communication, which forms a backbone of the public service that, that hams offer. And um, and again, it's for that vital public service that we've never charged rent at our site for the ham radio operators in, in over thirty years that we've been there. The um, another comment on page ninety-three, uh, the wording is very vague about indirect and cumulative impacts. Uh, and I think it doesn't need to be so vague. The public will be unknowingly exposed to greater RF radiation because of these rules. Again, uh, because without these rules, engineers could place antennas at a higher level where they would work better, and that would expose the public to less RF exposure. Hiding antennas adds costs that ultimately gets passed on to the customers and to the public. Although we can't accurately predict how much, it would be honest to say that it will increase the cost of your wireless services by adopting these rules. For companies like the major cellphone carriers with deeper profit margins, this may be an insignificant cost. Again, for an AT&amp;T, they can afford to uh stealth their facility much easier. Um, but startups and small businesses uh that are sometimes bringing the fifth G or sixth G or, or uh new and um exciting technologies don't necessarily and often don't have the, the pockets and the means to, um, to pay those costs. And they could be driven out, the small local and entrepreneurial uh entities could be driven out of our community because of rules like this. So in closing, um, these rules, I feel, make my site less safe. Height limits increase my RF exposure. Stealth measures increase the chance of debris blowing off towers and dramatically increases the, increases the cost of maintaining those towers. Uh, you're certainly not considering the safety of the people who have to climb towers and sort of maneuver around the uh adornments and uh risk tripping or snagging themselves on this stuff. And uh some of those who climb the tower are, again, our amateur radio operators and not necessarily uh, uh, you know, absolute uh professionals. So I would hate to see people injured or killed uh because of, of this kind of uh, you know, false leaves and whatnot that, that uh are, are in their way. I also visited antennasearch.com, and I found lots of very obsolete and incomplete data. And I'm curious, who maintains that site? Uh, and why would the public have confidence in its information? And why would they want to give up their ability to be self-aware of their environment? I thank you very much.
Any questions of Dr. Rasnow?
Where do you start?
Okay. If there are no questions, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Tina, now you can come up. Name and address, please.
Thank you. Tina Rasnow, one thousand South Ventu Park Road, Newberry Park, nine one three two zero. And thank you for allowing my brother to go first. He's a scientist, and he can explain the technology, not necessarily as I understand too well, but um I'd like to discuss some of the more practical issues. I have the same concern that he expressed, that the emphasis on this ordinance appears to be focusing on aesthetics. And I think aesthetics is the, the least important role that local government should play in protecting a community. Health and safety, to me, is far more important. And the reason I say that, and I perhaps have a unique perspective, because my father moved us to Rasnow Peak, to the mountain that he didn't name after himself, but apparently the city, Thousand Oaks, did. Um, but I was a child when I moved up there, and my view was of horse ranches and open fields. And I've seen my view change to look at a lot of cookie cutter housing tracks. Um, I liked my initial view better. I don't particularly care for the view that I see of Thousand Oaks compared to what it used to be, but I didn't feel like it was my ability to tell other people um that they have to use their property so that what I look at suits me. And this is what's so troublesome, is that the regulations that this new ordinance are going to place on our use of our ranch is mostly focused on changing, and I don't want to say preserving the view, because the antennas have been there for more than twenty years. I uh can assert, you know, say with certainty, we've not added any new towers in the twenty years, so I don't know if people are looking at them through a telescope to uh say that it looks like they're growing or they're changing, because the changes are constant, but their changes are not going to be viewed. We can see them because we live there. But from the distance of the one-on-one freeway, no, you just see the antennas and the towers. The heights have not changed on them. The equipment on those towers has changed, but not the overall height. Now, my brother mentioned that we um, we give space to the ham radio operators gratis. We don't charge, we never have. My father has been committed to um supporting them and their work and their public safety work from the time we first moved on to the ranch. And in that regard, right now, they have antennas located at the top of a sixty-foot tower and at the hundred thirty-foot level of a hundred fifty-foot tower, and the very top has been allocated for them by us. So they, that we consider what they do the most important of everything. It's more important than people getting their text messages. It's more important than getting, you know, TV. It's, it's the most important, because when that earthquake happens, they may be the only means of communication, of, of being able to communicate the needs of the community to get public safety. And so we um consider them our most valued and most important uh licensee on the ranch. Uh, and we don't get a penny for what they have there. So um I was a bit offended by the um attempt by staff in the report and the materials for this in Exhibit Six, when they um talk about the comments that my brother and I raised at the meeting in Ojai. We, we weren't in town to address the one in Thousand Oaks. We went out to Ojai, as if, you know, our comments are just self-serving because that's our business. Um, no, our comments are based on, it's, yes, it's our business, but it's also because we live closest to these antennas. In fact, my brother does measure. He has a meter to measure the RF, and he just measured them last week. So we do know, because we live closest, we do know what the power um output is. I'm not at all sure why the antennas that have been existing for decades, why they have to fall under this new criteria. I don't understand the need to apply for CUP every ten years. I know that in the past, my father would renew the CUP, and it was a two-page application, and it cost two thousand dollars. This last time, it was over sixty pages, and it cost us over seventy thousand dollars to renew the CUP. This is for the same towers that have existed there. And that is a cost that is going to ultimately be passed right back to the taxpayers, because the County nine-one-one facility, that is one of our largest users of the site, um, we um in our license agreement, um, placed the cost of getting the permits on the licensee. And therefore, we are seeking reimbursement from all of the carriers who have sites up there. And so a big chunk is going to be paid by one division of the county to fund the staff for the planning uh department. So we got billed a hundred fifty-six dollars an hour for staff time. It was like getting a lawyer bill. We got two bills a month. So um I, I think just, we've lost sight of any kind of sense of what local government is supposed to do. And it doesn't make sense to me. Um, I just want to go on record that I think the whole focus of this thing is totally misplaced. And I thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Rasnow. Questions?
I just want to say thank you for your point of view. It's one that isn't heard often. Rasnow Peak is something that I look directly at, so I'm one of the houses that you look at, and you probably would have preferred the, the empty hillside. But that being said, um, I think that the whole city of Thousand Oaks, the whole Caneo Valley, is served by that installation, something that I've, I've seen over, you know, the years that I've lived there. And um I'm aware that it's more than just texting and uh telephone conversations, you know, uh, what do you want to have for dinner tonight, honey? The way I'm. So I do appreciate that. From your point of view, are you seeing that uh the installation that exists now is going to be curbed by this new ordinance? Or that the cost is going to be, there's going to be increased costs? What, what are the, just take me through a list of the things that you're concerned with that is going to impact uh your ranch?
Well, anything over forty feet in height has to go through this discretionary permit review. And justification has to be given why it should remain. So the last, this last go-round, we had to have people, you know, Scott Allison and, and folks from your county emergency services came into, it was a, a planning director hearing, it wasn't before the planning commission, but um the ham radio operators, um, different representatives from different uh companies or nonprofits or county government services that have facilities up there all had to come in to justify why that height is necessary. And what they have to argue is public safety versus how it looks from a great distance, because, mind you, there isn't, other than our family living up there, there isn't anybody else close to me. So it's the view from the one-on-one freeway or from, you know, the base of Ventu Park Road. To respond to, this is just how ludicrous it was. We were told we need to put in a landscape plan and put in landscaping to screen the buildings, so they wouldn't be seen from one-on-one freeway. Well, there's actually just one corner of one building that was, or maybe two of the buildings. There's just a corner. So we have limited water, and this is even before the drought got as bad. We've now had to, to um remove one orchard on the ranch, and one of the wells, wells is failing, and we're in that long line with all the other ranchers trying to get another well drill. We don't get city water, even though we are taxed for it. We don't get it. So uh I, instead of putting in a landscape plan with water we don't have just to screen, I had my friend, who's a veteran Army Ranger, served in Vietnam and knows about camo paint, I had him paint the corner of the building that could be seen from one-on-one freeway. And they couldn't see it anymore. Staff could not see it anymore once it was painted with camo paint. Again, I just, I, we did it, but I think it's, it's just crazy. So this ordinance, as I see it, is going to make more of those kind of requirements. It's going to make it harder to justify the height, which the height provides better coverage, there's no question about that. It makes us safer who live. It makes us safer who live closest to these things. But they're going to have to justify it based on what other people see. And it may make, maybe camo paint will still be allowed, or maybe we'll have to put in plants or other screening that will use water we don't have. It just, I hope I'm answering your question, to give you specifics of why we think this thing is just so onerous for us. And to be quite candid, I can't go through what I went through for the last renewal. I just, my life is too valuable to spend three and a half years going through that battle again. So, when this CUP expires, I'm going to ask the licensees to go renew whatever they want to renew, but it won't be me, because I don't have that kind of fortitude to go through it another time.
And the, thank you for that answer. The ability to expand your site on your, your ridge, you have all the service providers, and you have ham radio, and you have public safety, fire-
Correct.
Sheriff. And what other, what ability do you have to expand?
Well, the type of companies that we are seeing, the entrepreneurs that my brother mentioned, are these small internet companies. They provide high-speed internet. And they are little mom-and-pop startups, innovative people, excited about providing new and innovative services in the area of internet. And the cost of getting a permit, just going in and getting a modification, when they're billed $156 an hour for staff time, let alone the initial deposit they have to put down, has been a deterrent for some to the point where they have abandoned. And so, we don't get the revenue from them, we lose out on getting the revenue. They lose out on a goal of starting a new business out here, and then the public loses when there's, when the only players in town are the large corporations that can afford these fees, well, then you've got the ability, it, it borders on, you know, antitrust issues. When consumers have choices in the marketplace, prices are less and services are better. When there's no choice, you're stuck with one cable provider, they can provide lousy service and charge whatever they want for it. So, everybody loses when we destroy competition.
So, you're not in favor of the, of the ordinance as it stands at all, because in your mind, it places more importance on aesthetics uniformly regarding, regardless of where these installations are, you're following the same guidelines as a microcell that maybe is on top of, you know, a hilltop or something, versus, versus your installation, which serves the entire community?
I'm here speaking not just because we have the antennas on our ranch. I may attend a service in a church service and not realize that there is an antenna in the steeple. I may send grandchildren to school not realizing there's an antenna in the flagpole. I speak about my concern about hiding these things and trying to integrate them into existing structures so that they're not seen. That concern is, is not related specifically to where we live. Obviously, I don't like the idea of having to invest money and resources just to hide something which does not help, it in fact hinders the ability for the, the antenna to do its job, which is to communicate out a signal. And it, it just does nothing to protect health or safety. So, yes, I have concerns about for the ranch, but my concerns are broader than that, because I live in a community, I don't just live on the ranch, I do go down and conduct business in the same places everybody else frequents.
I don't mean to misstate, I, I restate it so that I can reflect and perhaps understand or not understand, I'm still trying to understand. So, we have testimony from our county expert that there is no cumulative impact to radio frequency machines if they are on different spectrum. Do you feel that there is a potential, or that we just don't know that there's a health impact, and that's why you want these things visible?
Can I ask my brother to respond to that, because he is the scientist?
Of course. Okay. And, and again, I am just trying to understand your point of view, and I appreciate it.
Yeah, the, the precautionary principle basically says that when there is uncertainty, we should err on the side of caution. Now, again, FCC laws give you, you know, tie your hands, that you cannot deny things. But, you can still allow people to make decisions as they might. So, there is, there are people, 3%, as we heard from the previous professor, you know, a study says 3% of Californians believe that they are sensitive to electromagnetic radiation. There are studies that, you know, argue, that refute that, but certainly for those 3% of people, their belief is real, or a large percentage of them. And, and it seems like, as a, as a public entity, you're not doing a service by precluding them from acting on their beliefs of choosing to avoid radio frequency, you know, sources or getting further away from them. So, bottom line, there is, the, the science, I mean, if you think of like cigarette smoking, it took many, many years where it was sort of obvious to most people that cigarettes are probably, you know, two packs a day isn't the best thing for your lungs, right? I mean, there's sort of a reasonability level to that, but the level of proof that it took, it wasn't until about 1998 or 99 that the federal government actually, you know, passed the major laws. And the, what caused the, the major laws on cigarettes was not a scientific study, it was a whistleblower from the tobacco industry who released the documents on 60 Minutes. And so, proving these subtle effects, and then again, you know, smoking two packs a day, I think most of us would say is not a subtle health effect, right? But proving such a subtle effect was extremely difficult and took decades and decades. So, for us to say that cell phones are certainly safe, I don't, I think that's ludicrous, right? There is a finite risk, there is a finite chance that there could be a danger, and none of us know what that answer is. And again, there are people on all sides, you know, those that are advocating and saying, oh, this stuff is totally safe, the jury is out, they're lying as much as those who are saying that this thing turns your brain into mush, you know, and, you know, they're, they're nutcases on both sides. But I think where government can take a reasonable stance, especially in lieu of the federal laws that, that sort of do curtail, what you can do is to at least make people, make it, allow individuals to make informed decisions as they choose. And, and that's what this ordinance is doing the exact opposite of, in my opinion.
Thank you. I appreciate your point of view.
Any further questions to Ms. Razna? Thank you very much.
Thank you for your time.
My last speaker card is James Fortney. Name and address, sir.
My name is James T. Fortney. I live at 11865 Perdara Road in the Santa Rosa Valley. Speaking last after hearing all these people makes it very difficult. I, I am, among other things, a communications consultant, and there are a lot of these topics that I'd like to share with you, but that was not my purpose in coming here today. I have been an amateur radio operator for 57 years, and for the last 40 years, I have been active in public service and emergency communications. As is evident in the package that you received, about 30% of it proceeds to cover discussions that the planning department has had with amateur radio operators and representatives. So, I hope you recognize that this is an important element that you consider when you look at this ordinance, this proposed ordinance. Although it's not represented in the package, the amateur radio operators made their concerns very clear to the county in the early meetings in March of 2013. And it was only after a couple of sessions like that, that the efforts to pull together the group that you would confer with finally came to pass. I have a very different opinion than was expressed by our league representative, and so I need to make that clear, that I'm only speaking for myself, but I think I have a lot of experience to share with you. Besides amateur radio, I'm also licensed with the Department of Defense, because they give volunteer licenses to people who help support the defense assistance to local agency effort. And I'm also licensed with the Department of Homeland Security. Now, both of these are built upon the fact that I have an amateur radio license, but they are in fact totally different licenses, and they have a totally different set of requirements, and in fact, the latter two I mentioned are not even issued by the FCC, they are in fact issued by the federal government, specifically the Communications Agency. The subject you had presented to you today is very complex. It has been oversimplified, in my opinion, in the presentation that's been given to you by the planning department. The amateur radio's representative's concern from the beginning was that the document that was presented did not seem to present a recognition of what amateur radio is and how it uses communications facilities. The emphasis for putting this regulation together in the beginning was because with the continued advancement of cellular services, the Verizon's and AT&amp;Ts and all the other people that have been mentioned, including all these people that are now out trying to sell internet services, is causing, and the fact that the Federal Communications Commission is pushing them higher and fire, higher in frequency, and therefore, all of their communications facilities have to be closer and closer together, there are a lot more of them required, and that's because of the frequency, not necessarily just because of the number of people that are using them. The issue of how you're going to maintain reasonable acceptance of all of these radio towers in the middle of your city is of paramount importance. It was mentioned earlier that Camarillo and Ojai are off going, doing something with this, well, their only reason they're doing something is because you're doing something. And they want to be able to have their own version of what's going to be done in order to try and regulate the installation of all these towers. There's a statement in the Planning Commission staff report that says that amateur radio or ham radios are non-commercial FCC-licensed communication facilities operated by local residents on a single frequency band. There is no way that that could be any more incorrect than could possibly be stated. Amateur radio operators have allocations from very, very low frequencies to extremely high microwave frequencies. The majority of the services that are going to use your wireless communications facilities that are being installed by the major carriers, and those that are being installed by the internet providers, are in fact in the UHF and microwave region of the RF spectrum. The issues you've heard about the effect of RF on the body is in fact of greatest concern at those frequencies. Amateur radio operators utilize frequencies that go way, way down in frequency, and therefore, as was explained to you a little bit ago, means that the antennas get bigger and bigger. That's just the simple mathematics of how long a radio wave is, and in fact, in order to have a resonant antenna, the antenna gets bigger. Now, don't get me wrong, a lot of these cellular sites are going to end up with much bigger antennas also, but the reason they're going to have bigger antennas is because they're not a single antenna. They put lots of elements, basically lots of antennas, all in one package, in order to get the additional gain. And therefore, they produce fairly large antennas, even though the single resonant antenna is reasonably small. The provisions that were put in this ordinance to deal with the wireless communications facilities that are used by the commercial users, I will let those people go argue this. What I want to argue with you is the fact that this just simply does not support amateur radio, and in fact, is extremely detrimental to amateur radio. You have provisions, which if you go look at today's planning division fee schedule, suggests that for an amateur to put up an antenna initially, it could easily cost him $500 to $600 just in permits. And as was suggested earlier today, one of the things that amateurs do is they constantly experiment, and they are constantly changing antennas, and under the county's interpretation of the FCC Regulation 6409A, they have proceeded to decide that anytime we go touch our equipment, all of a sudden, we are going to be subjected to additional permitting. And if you will go to the section that has been released that talks about that, you will note that although there were a lot of agreements that were made with the amateur radio operators, as of the 7th of January of this month, which is after all those discussions were held, the county has proceeded to change all those requirements, and in fact, basically is saying that it is going to cost us $6,000 to $10,000 every time we want to put up an antenna. There are likewise misrepresentations in here about how this doesn't affect amateur radio. Again, we have been unsuccessful at explaining to the planning department what amateur radio is, and what the communications facilities required for that hobby to operate are. As long as we keep snugging a tower up next to the house, the planning department all of a sudden, you know, gets friendly with us, and as long as we don't go over 40 feet, we're okay. But when we want to go put that tower out in the yard, or we want to go higher in the elevation with that tower, and I'll, I'll just say, take my, my 40-foot tower and put it in the yard, all of a sudden, I go from what's basically a ministerial permit to a $6,000 to $10,000 conditional use permit requirement. It's ridiculous. Amateur radio operators could not exist in that environment. One of the things that I do is I support some of those sites, like the Raznas I've talked to you about, on hilltops. We were able to get the county planning department's recognition that many of those sites are commercial sites, therefore, they must have a CUP, and the facility must be in fact properly permitted and constructed in accordance with the requirements. However, you need to understand that every time an amateur wants to go change an antenna on that tower, if he's going to go from a five-foot tall antenna to a 20-foot tall antenna, and it's on the top of the tower, all of a sudden, we've got a CUP requirement that we've got to go meet. And although it may be a commercial installation that gets initially installed, when the amateur radio operator wishes to go upgrade his facility, he's impacted with unreasonable requirements. The county's very conservative, as they've already stated to you, interpretation of Section 6409A has resulted in them, for all intents and purposes, in my opinion, reversing all the agreements that the amateur team made with the county. And if you will go to pages, I believe it's 58 and 59, in the report, you will see that they have added addendum notes, it's in the, it's in the memorandum for amateur radio facilities. If you will go to that, you will see that they have added notes that are all dated the 7th of January of this year, and I'll give you an exact page. Page 58 and 59, bottom of 58, top of 59, are examples of where something that could possibly have been handled by some simpler- possibly have been handled by some simpler and less costly procedure has now become one of the major money-making tasks for the county in issuing and reviewing conditional use permits. Bottom line of what I have to say is that the purpose of, that I believe the ordinance was requested in the first place, was to deal with personal communications, and you'll note that that is an FCC term, and it has to do with specific services, like your cellphone service, and like your text editing services, and that this ordinance ought to be restricted to those services and facilities that support those services. When you start talking about towers that are designed for VHF and lower frequencies, the situation is very different. The requirement for RF protection is different. The requirement for antenna size is different. The ability to attach it to the side of your house no longer works. One of the things that this ordinance looks at is a bunch of vertical antennas. Well, I will tell you, all you got to do is go look into pictures that the county has included in here of some of the amateur installations, and you're not talking about just a tower. You're talking about a horizontal beam on the top of that tower. And yes, you have to have aesthetic considerations considered, but the simple fact of the matter is, these provisions don't deal with that. I believe the ordinance was presented to you improperly. The statement that's made by the county is that they have reviewed all of the comments. And you will note that for one reason or another, they have not chosen to say that they have resolved or reconciled all of those comments. But I believe that statement is incorrect. I do not believe that all the comments have in fact been resolved. And my personal request is that you return this proposed ordinance to the planning department to resolve the issues that I've just talked about, as well as the several other technical issues that have been brought up by other speakers today. May I answer any questions?
Any questions to the speaker?
So, what you just pointed out was that although there's a height limitation, there's nothing on the breadth of the antenna side.
That's an example.
As an example.
And in fact, I will tell you, and I'm sure the league representative will be glad to tell you, that that is in fact typically where amateur radio antennas end up being a problem. Because the big horizontal beam is much more visible and much more obvious than the vertical antennas that we put up for the other services. And, you know, there are no provisions in here anywhere for the amateur to have that considered. The words talk like, every time that's going to happen, the guy's going to go stick a 40-foot tower on the side of his house and put it on there. And that is not the truth.
And what you would like to see is a breaking off of ham radio antennas, that it completely be excised from this ordinance?
Because amateur radio antennas do in fact exist on commercial installations, there is probably a necessity to deal with the fact that that does happen. However, my personal opinion is that this fee schedule that is currently written up is totally inappropriate, inappropriate for amateur radio operations. If you will take a look at the county fee schedule, you will note that there are a number of instances where they recognize either non-commercial, or use-supported, or public-service-type agencies. And in all of those instances, the fees are a fraction of what the other fees are. I believe that it would be appropriate for the county to consider a different, a separate fee structure when you're dealing with amateur radio antennas. I'm not suggesting that amateur radio antennas don't need to be reviewed and regulated at all. All I'm saying is that the ordinance that is written here was not intended to regulate amateur radio antennas. It was intended to regulate cellphone antennas. My opinion is that if that's what the ordinance is going to do, then yes, amateur radio ought to be written out of that. I do not have any confidence whatsoever that if you were to approve this ordinance as it's written, that the county would have any ability to write administrative procedures that would provide amateur radio operators the relief that they would need. I think the chairman picked up on that at the time it was discussed.
Thank you.
Any other questions to the speaker? Thank you. We appreciate your time, sir.
Thank you.
All right, that's the last speaker card that the chair has. Is there anybody else for the good of the order would like to speak? Not seeing anybody, then at this point in time, our standard practice is to have the applicant an opportunity to rebut. Once again, this will blend over into the staff report, I assure. So, I won't close the public hearing until we've heard that. Applicant or staff?
Commissioner Westner, I will begin by addressing a few of the issues, and then I will call upon other members of our team, Mr. Ingstrom, Mr. Sebold, and also Mr. Barnes, to respond to specific other issues. First, I wanted to identify two areas where we would be happy, before we go to the board, if necessary, to clarify language. For instance, the industry brought up the fact that, in their view, the language we currently have in the ordinance isn't really clear enough regarding maintenance. We'll be happy to do that before we go to the board. But I would want to clarify that when we do that, we want to make sure that we really are talking about maintenance and not the replacement of the facility with something that's different. The industry also requested that we expand the amount of time that's made available for site restoration from 90 to 180 days. I confirmed with the planning director on that, and she's amenable to making that change. I wanted to clarify that with respect to the three new provisions that we brought forward that were not in the original staff recommendation. The second two that are text amendments really are currently part of the staff recommendation, but the third one, which is to remove the pictures from the ordinance, is an option that's available to the planning commission, but quite frankly, the staff likes the pictures. We think it's going to help both staff and applicants. It's going to help clarify the ordinance. So, we think it's an advantage to have them in there, but we're more than happy to add in some language that makes it clear, these are simply examples. They're examples to help people understand, well, what does it mean to be a stealth facility? I wanted to also respond to the industry comment regarding the height restrictions. I actually think there's some misunderstanding about our ordinance and how the height restrictions work within our ordinance. Height restrictions tell you how high your building can be and how high the roof can be. But there are exceptions outside that height for items like church steeples or cupules, which the representative from Verizon mentioned. We already have exceptions for those. Now, when you look at that, we will, of course, if someone wants to build a church steeple, we want to make sure the church steeple is 10 times larger than the church itself. So, you want to look to make sure that, from a proportionate standpoint, that it makes sense, and it actually looks like a church steeple. But there are exceptions to the height standards, and I think there may be some confusion regarding those. On the other hand, we think that it is appropriate to stay with our zoning ordinance standards when it comes to standard building and roofs. If someone wants to hide a facility within an actual extra story on a building or within a roof, then in our view, those types of structures should conform to the zoning ordinance. With respect to the small cell exemption, as mentioned in our response in Attachment 12, we disagree with the industry that there should be an exemption from permits for small cells. And in our response, we mentioned a variety of reasons why. There's no opportunity for public input. As far as I know, we wouldn't even know those cells are there. So, this is inconsistent with some of the testimony we've heard today regarding RF emissions, where one of the things we're planning to do is to put together a map, so that people want to know, people who really have concerns about the cell, they can go in, look at the map, see where they are. We're also requiring signage and things like that. I don't know that we could even do an exemption without processing environmental impact report, which we're not using for this project. Commissioner Rodriguez asked about military issues. Happens that about a week ago, I attended one of the latest meetings. There's a joint land use study going on regarding the compatibility between private and military land use. And one of the representatives from the military did mention that this is an issue for them. They want to have an opportunity to review permits. And one of the things we do is we distribute these permits to the military organization. They have an opportunity to respond back, to let us know whether a proposed facility is going to impact their operations. So, for all these various reasons, we strongly disagree regarding the proposal for a small cell exemption. Before I turn this over to some other folks, I would want to mention that with respect to the amateur radio, I think we included the outline for some of the submittal requirement changes. We did give that to the amateur radio group. We've actually begun to flesh out what that special submittal would look like, and we'll continue to work with them, because it is true, they operate under different kinds of technical and other issues that we're not expert at, and we don't completely understand. But I would ask, I'm going to now ask Mr. Sebold first, and then I'll pass it off to Erin. Mr. Sebold, could you respond also to the RF emission issue and some of the amateur radio issues brought up today?
Mr. Tickle, your name for the record, because people are listening to you.
Andy Sebold, I'm the consultant to the planning staff on wireless. As far as RF emissions, the FCC precludes you, as you know, from acting upon it, all right? There are other ways to protect citizens. One of the things that's most interesting to me is that as you travel around the country and you ask about stealth versus non-stealth antennas, the public is about 50% either way. 50% of the people don't want to see the antennas, and 50% want to know they're there so they can try to avoid them. So, there's no real consensus on that point. The issue of height is certainly important, but in struggling with what the planning people did, you can't say higher is better from a RF emissions point of view. You're not allowed to do that by the federal government. The bottom line is, the higher the antennas are, as the doctor pointed out, the better they are, and the better people are below them. Antennas, cellular antennas, are very focused. They're usually a cell sector with 120-degree pattern. The antenna itself is about 90 degrees. They generally point straight out, so that the people underneath them and the people on the sides of them are not in any danger, the antennas themselves. If you look at the diagrams of the sites that are provided for people who service the sites, the painters and the electricians and things like that, there's a red zone and a yellow zone in front of the antenna that's four to six to eight feet at the most, and beyond that, they're considered safe. If you're 70 feet from an antenna, as an example, and the antenna's here and you're down here, the chances of any kind of radiation are very small. And the other thing is that, once you get far enough away from an antenna, and by that I mean 50, 75 feet, you're liable to get more RF exposure from your Wi-Fi access point in your home than you are a cellular antenna. Okay, what was the second? Okay. The amateur radio community, and I'm a ham, I've been a licensed amateur radio operator since I was 14 years old. So, when I got this contract, I tried to explain the very differences that he was explaining, because there are differences. It was a very difficult situation, because there are certain requirements that the county has, and yet, there is a burden that we don't want to place on the amateur radio community. I will tell you very honestly, I would have made additional changes to the recommendation that the people I work for took under advisement and decided not to. So, I have looked at radio, amateur radio ordinances in many, many other parts of the country, and there are a lot worse, and there are a lot better. But this one, I thought, was kind of in the middle and would be appropriate with the appropriate type of questionnaire form to be filled out that limits the scope of what's needed. The antenna replacement issue, I agree with the hams. I have an amateur radio repeater on Senninaz Peak in Santa Barbara County, and I have, in the last two years, changed my antenna four times, okay, to get better coverage of the areas I wanted. If I had had to apply for a permit each time, at 200 bucks apiece, $300 apiece, I would have been really upset. So, I think that whether this ordinance continues to agree with the amateur, or to try to handle the amateur community, or whether it's done separately, it does need additional work. And the group that the hams put together are very qualified people, including your county communications people, who understand the differences between amateur radio, public safety, and cellular.
Any questions, Mr. Sebold? Your button, please.
Okay. So, is your recommendation that the amateur radio section be considered separately from the ordinance?
If it could be done as a separate ordinance, that would be my absolute preference. If it has to be included in this, then I have some changes I'd like to recommend, and I'm sure the ham community too. Just to be more specific, I understand from the people I'm working with, their intention is not to penalize the amateur radio community. But by the same token, they have to have a certain amount of fee structure and things like that. So, trying to balance that, I'm not sure it came out the way it should have.
Okay. And then my other question has to do with the comparison of exposures. You know, we're all carrying around cell phones, we're using microwaves, we have the Wi-Fi in our houses. How does that compare? What is our general exposure to that compared to what would be on a micro tower or a taller tower?
Well, it depends on proximity to the tower, okay? Your cellphone that you're carrying is about a quarter of a watt, 250 milliwatts. It's hardly any power at all because of the cell sites and the number of cell sites. To give you a comparison, a police officer or a ham radio operator carrying a handheld is talking with five watts of power, a lot, lot more. So, and the Wi-Fi is very low power in your home. The only danger is if you have a problem with your microwave oven. And by the way, that's on the same frequency as Wi-Fi, just so you understand that. But once you get a few feet away from a cellular antenna, and you're below it, or to the side of it, or whatever, there's very, very little possibility of receiving radiation. You saw that the FCC requires 1/50 of what they determine to be dangerous. You saw that the FCC requires 1/50th of what they determine to be dangerous. They measure it, the vendors all measure it, all right? AT&amp;T, Verizon, Sprint, T-Mobile, they can tell you exactly what their power output is, they can tell you what their radiation pattern is, and they can tell you that they're in compliance, because that's what they do. And they do that because they don't want any added liability that they might cause a problem.
Thank you.
Another question. Commissioner Russell?
In your professional opinion, does this ordinance, as drafted and reviewed by you, either enhance or detract from public safety?
I don't think it has a big impact on public safety. There are some, you have to understand that public safety is about to undergo some really severe changes in the next five years. Public safety is licensed on lots of different frequencies for voice. There's now a nationwide broadband network that will be brought in by the federal government for each county. Your people will be allowed to use it for data and video. You have to upgrade your systems to next-generation 911. That has implications of text messages and video back and forth. So I don't see anything in the ordinance today that precludes the public safety community from continuing to do what they're doing.
What's coming down the road?
It's going to be very exciting. For the first time, public safety is going to have the ability to send video and data back from the scene of an incident or to a patrol car.
And from a health perspective, the changes, the limitations on towers, enhance or detract from health issues, public health?
Well, I think I said it earlier, of course, we're not allowed to talk about health, but...
Oh, yes, you are.
Okay. The higher the antenna is off the ground, the better it is for the people surrounding that area, all right? If you go to the Midwest, in fact, one of the things, if you drive from Cincinnati to Dayton, you go over a hill, you can see 32 cell sites. And every one of them is 199 feet high, because at 200 feet, they would have to light them. So they're all 199 feet high. But they're all that high to cover broad areas. But the result of that is that any buildings that are surrounding, if people thought they were in danger, they wouldn't be. So you're balancing a couple of things, aesthetics and the height of the antenna.
Thank you, sir.
Commissioner Rodriguez?
Before, just let me put something out there and then get to a question that I know I'm going to forget, and then come back to the first one.
Okay.
The first one is the difference between coverage and capacity, and the need for shorter, lower-to-the-ground stations versus the one that I'm going to forget. Could you answer the concerns that were raised by the professor regarding the Los Robles Hospital, that it seemed to be mounted within the building, and how that power output would impact, not impact, a patient that might be in room, you know, the room next door?
Okay. So first of all, I haven't made any measurements of that hospital. I can't talk about that specific thing.
And it's beyond our purview, and this is just for advocacy sake.
But let me see if I can make some, the new broadband spectrum is either at 700 megahertz, which used to be TV channels 52 to 69, or up in what they call the AWS spectrum, which is 1900, 2200. At 700 and 800, which is where some other cellular, they penetrate buildings pretty well. But they're also low enough in frequency that they don't pose as much danger as the frequencies that are higher. So as they add capacity, as they add more spectrum, which the FCC is busy selling, they go higher in spectrum. Now, that means they have to build more towers closer together to get the same amount of coverage. But the higher it is, the least penetration it has in buildings. So when you're up at AWS frequencies, it doesn't penetrate nearly as well into a building as when you're at 700, all right? The difference is, as the higher you go, the less penetration you get. Now, your other comment was?
The need for more than just 200-foot towers.
Okay.
And building a network, and how it comes down in elevation.
All right, so, I don't want to get too long-winded, but when cellular systems first started, they built towers 10 miles apart. And as they got more and more customers, they built them five miles apart, then three miles apart. And that's the way a cellular system was designed. We're at a point now where so many people are streaming video, and so many people are receiving data, large amounts of data, that the cell sites are running out of capacity. I said that a cell site's in a sector, all right? If you're the only person in that sector, you get all that bandwidth. But if there are 20 of you in that cellphone sector, and you're all streaming video, it's going to look really bad because it's going to slow down a lot, all right? So the way you do that is you either add more spectrum, which is not available, or you build more cell sites closer together. Now, what's happening now is, instead of big building, quarter of a million dollar big cell sites, they're going to smaller cell nodes. And they're mounted on telephone poles, or on the side of buildings, or whatever. And they're used to fill in where there is a lot of capacity needed. So you're going to see more and more of the smaller cell sites. The president of Google once said that there will be a microcell every 100 feet that you walk, and that's only because Google owns a lot of fiber. But we're getting to the point, you can now, by the way, go to AT&amp;T, Verizon, or Sprint, and get a little cell that you put in your house, and connect to your own internet, all right? So we're getting to the point, and fifth generation, which is coming, is a marriage of small cells, Wi-Fi, and 4G all put together, so that your coverage and your capacity is kind of matched.
Okay, but there is a distinction in the law between coverage and capacity?
Between what?
Between coverage and capacity.
Absolutely.
Yeah.
All right.
Okay. I'm sorry, go ahead.
Okay. So in New York, in the theater district, AT&amp;T and Verizon can handle everything. When the theaters let out at 10 o'clock at night, people have trouble making calls because they don't have the capacity. So now they're installing more cells to add to that capacity.
And stadiums and any other place where there's a large number of people.
Same, same thing.
You mentioned Wi-Fi, you know, in the house. Is public, are those public, or are they to your own little family and friends' network?
If you're smart, they're encoded, so nobody else can use them.
Mm-hmm.
I mean, one of the, one of the things, early on in the Wi-Fi days, was you would drive down the street till you found a neighbor who had Wi-Fi, and it wasn't encrypted, so you'd just sit out in your car and get on the internet. But most of them are encrypted today. Now, there are Wi-Fi hotspots in lots of public venues, which are open to everybody.
But the ones in the, in your home, they're encrypted, they're encrypted, but you also have a license agreement saying?
If it's Wi-Fi, you don't need a license. Wi-Fi is unlicensed radio spectrum.
Okay.
And the rule is that you can put a Wi-Fi node anywhere you want, and if you interfere with somebody, that's too bad, and if they interfere with you, that's too bad.
Please, sir. Ladies and gentlemen, let me make this real clear. This is a quasi-judicial proceeding. The purpose of this meeting is for the five of us to make a decision. If you talk to us, nobody's interrupt or anything else if it disturbs our ability to make a decision. Now, I appreciate this is a first time for some of you, but this is a very serious matter, and we've taken everybody's deliberation and counsel. But it's important for us to be able to clearly talk to the person at the diocese, all right? That's the warning. Thank you.
All right, so to answer that, Wi-Fi is very low-power, extremely low-power.
And I think that was the clarification that came from the audience, is that there's limits on power.
Right.
Excuse me, but the Wi-Fi is distinctly different from like a microcell?
Yes. A microcell is on AT&amp;T's channel, Verizon's spectrum, or Sprint. You need their permission to put it in. You connect it to your back hall, and usually a GPS, so it knows where you are, and they then add it to the back of their network. But that's with their permission. Wi-Fi, you put up and connect to your cable modem, or your DSL, or whatever, and it's there to use.
In your professional opinion, between the 50% of the people who want it stealth and 50% of the people who want to be able to see it so they can avoid it, which half are you in?
Which half am I in?
Yeah.
I like both, all right? But I'm a little different. I've been doing this for 25 years.
You're not going to answer my question.
Well, I can find most stealth antennas.
Okay. Okay. But do you believe, do you believe that it's in the public interest for the general public to know where every antenna is because of potential health concerns? Do you believe that 50%?
No, I don't.
Okay. Thank you.
I'd like to make one other point here, if I could, except now that I forgot it.
Yeah.
Oh, you had made a comment earlier, wait a minute, I'm sorry.
Just, just take a minute.
Okay.
I have the same...
It's a senior moment.
As my doctor explains to me, forgetting what your car keys, that's okay. Forgetting what the car keys are for, then we have a problem.
That's right. Okay. I don't, I don't remember.
Commissioner?
I have one more question, and since I don't see it, I assume it wasn't done, but is there, and there was nothing done to show what the county would look like, what different areas would look like without the stealth?
No. And that was what reminded me. Trying to make a map of cell sites is virtually impossible.
Really?
All right? Old cell sites, the original days, every single cell site that AT&amp;T or Verizon put up had to be licensed by the FCC, and it was in a licensed database. That requirement has gone away. So there is no keeper of a database of where all the cell sites are. And you will find, correct me if I'm wrong, that both AT&amp;T and Verizon, and Sprint, and T-Mobile probably are not going to be forthcoming with where every one of their sites is that you don't already know.
Well, then, how did they get permitted to construct?
Well, you have sites, for example, on the Forest Service property that are not permitted by you.
Oh, I see. Other entities that have permitting authority, other than the county.
Correct. But it's also possible, since a lot of these sites have been around for 20 years, that there's some of them that have fallen off your radar.
Thank you. Interesting.
Any other questions, Commissioner?
Can you speak to the safety of using the faux-trees and the maintenance of the cell facility, whether there's a safety issue versus non-stealth, or how much of a safety issue there might be in...
You know what? I got to tell you, I'm not qualified as an antenna climber, all right? The equipment itself is usually housed in a, in a building down below the site, and that's accessible by the technician. If an antenna work has to be done, they hire an antenna guy, or they get a bucket truck. And, you know, a tower is certainly easier to climb than a faux-palm tree, but if they have a bucket truck, they'll just go up and work on it. So I don't know that it's any different.
Thank you.
Any other questions, Ms.? Thank you.
Thank you.
Applicant, please.
Thank you. I'd now like to have our case planner, Erin Ingstrom, speak to a number of issues, starting with providing a bit more information on amateur radio, just in a rebuttal, and also to talk more about the submittal requirements, also address a couple of issues brought up by the industry representatives, the alternative sites analysis, propagation maps, and the term modification which they brought up. And also, Erin, if you could just talk, remind the commissioners exactly what we're doing with respect to public safety provisions. But before he gets started, I just would like to say two things, more generally speaking. And one is the RF emissions. When we were out doing public outreach, it became very clear very quickly that there were, it's going to be a subset, I don't think it's 50%, but I think there is a subset of persons who have a serious concern about RF emissions. And they asked that we make the towers as tall as possible, and possibly even paint them orange or yellow so that you know they're all there. So obviously, that's different than the whole idea of making sure that these facilities fit into their setting. We actually believe we can deal with the emissions issue and also make sure that our county visual resources are protected. We've tried to strike that balance, and we hope we've succeeded in the ordinance. With respect to amateur radio, what the, one gentleman essentially was asking for, he was not the only person, is that he wanted us to, they want us to create a separate ordinance for amateur radio. Today, amateur radio, when constructed as an accessory to a dwelling, is addressed in our ordinance, but quite frankly, if there, if an amateur radio person is building outside that framework, they're really covered by our standard regulations. So for us to thoroughly address the amateur radio community, we would need to create a separate ordinance. If your commission wishes to recommend to the board that we do that, and the board then decides to do that, that would certainly be within your prerogative and theirs. But as staff members, we didn't actually have the ability to do that. So we did our best to address amateur radio. I'm going to ask Erin to let you know some of the ways, just to remind you, some of the ways in which we did that within the ordinance. Thank you.
Erin, before you step up, we've been up here for a few minutes, and some of us are over a certain age. So we're going to take a five-minute break. We'll be back here... Ms. Ingstrom, are you ready, sir?
So I have been tasked with discussing amateur radios a little bit more here. And so just to, when we started off with this ordinance process, basically, the intention was not to change the regulations for amateur radio. Most of these facilities are accessory to a dwelling, but there are constraints when they, these operators live in HOAs, or they need to put antennas higher up on ridge lines or other areas for various reasons. So there was no intention to change the laws for amateur radios. The fee schedule for permits is a separate issue that is not included in the wireless ordinance, so the fee structure can be revised per the regular process for doing that. That's not part of this project, although there is a possibility to try to impose a less expensive fee for zoning clearance for amateur radios. Basically, from the top down, these facilities are primarily located on residences, as I mentioned. They can also co-locate on other facilities. There can be mobile facilities, and there can be ground-mounted facilities. So the, when they're accessory to a residential dwelling, the amateur radio operator can have it either next to the house, or anywhere on, say, a 20-acre site, it would still be considered accessory to a dwelling because it's a ground-mounted facility. So they have a lot of leeway to cite these facilities anywhere on the site, as long as they are the owner and operator of that facility. The new federal law, the 649 colocations, as well as the 649 modifications, allow colocations through a zoning clearance. So essentially, amateur radio facilities can now modify their facilities to be, if they're, you know, ground-mounted standalone facilities, 20 feet taller, 20 feet wider, through a zoning clearance pursuant to the federal law. So it's much easier for colocation now than it was before. The standards for accessory dwelling have not changed. So essentially, that leaves us with... So essentially, that leaves us with the last one, which is when these facilities are not accessory to a dwelling, and they're not co-located. So we're either talking about standalone ground-mounted facilities off of the owner's site, such as on a ridge line in open space somewhere, or mounting facilities on a building. And so basically, the discretionary process is retained for that right now, because, for one thing, residents in general prefer to have a public hearing process for new, large new facilities. And so basically, and also when these ground-mounted facilities are cited in open space, they're basically the same idea as a commercial facility. The technical wavelengths and broad, and equipment may differ, but essentially, it's a ground-mounted mast or pole that houses antennas. So it was difficult to try to work our way around a discretionary CEP for ground-mounted facilities that are located, you know, in prominent areas of the county. But however, there are some ways to facilitate and streamline the process for these types of facilities, which basically were the last sticking point that I perceived. And that was to, you know, they are categorized as public safety, so they may be allowed to be, have exemptions from the development standards. So if there's onerous faux requirements in some instances, those could be rescinded or exempted for those, for those, in those particular instances. Obviously, the discretionary review process, as was noted, can be cumbersome, you know. Some sites are very large and very complicated, whereas others are not. The Planning Division did include in Exhibit 10, we worked with the amateur radio working group to develop a streamlined application process, which will give them a break on costly items that typically require hiring a consultant to fulfill the application, such as propagation diagrams, visual impact analysis, alternative site analysis. Some of those items, the Planning Division will streamline so that they don't have to hire outside technical consultants that charge, you know, a hefty amount to cite these facilities. So basically, that's the idea. They should utilize the 6409 provision for a zoning clearance. There's also a zoning clearance to cite non-commercial antennas, co-locate non-commercial antennas, which was made for them prior to the release of the new law. We're giving them a break on the application submittal requirements. Zoning clearances are allowed on residential units, zoning clearance to co-locate. And then we streamline the process when they're discretionary ground-mounted facilities that are technically treated as a wireless communication facility under the ordinance. So that being said, you know, a separate ordinance would be possible, but it's probably not necessary because these facilities are few and far between. The ordinance is set up to incentivize colocation first, to incentivize accessory to a dwelling first, so that rare instances where amateur radio operators have to develop their own ground-mounted facility should be a last resort. And when that happens, the county has been, has tried very hard to streamline the process for them, and is developing a separate standalone application. I think that is my rebuttal.
Okay. Is that all of the applicant's rebuttal?
No, it is not. Did you address the alternative sites analysis, propagation maps, and the modification term?
Whoa, sure. So I think the modifications, I think it maybe is, you know, this is per the industry's comments, right?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Correct.
So the modifications are complicated, right? There's two types of equipment on a facility. There may be faux equipment, such as frond leaves and things like that, fake bark. And then there is the technology used to actually transmit the data and the information. Now, the county has the ability to regulate the fronds, has things, less ability to regulate the technology, simply the shape of the technology. So I think it is feasible to include, maybe in the definition of modification, that routine maintenance is not considered a modification. However, there is currently a zoning clearance for modifications, where the equipment size remains the same, or gets smaller. However, I don't want, I'm hesitant to consider a, just, you know, an exclusion for switching equipment, because technically, half of the facility could be considered equipment of the same size, and could be replaced with some other equipment that's a different shape or form, but is technically the same size. The fronds are technically equipment, you know, so making the fronds smaller may not be something the Planning Division would concur with. And, you know, there's a lot of modifications today to add remote radio heads to increase the power and the distance of these facilities, and those can be hidden behind the antennas through a zoning clearance. So I think that the concept that we'd like to achieve is basically, yeah, swap out the fronds when they're weathered or old, you know, repaint the facility, those types of things should not require a zoning clearance. But for the equipment itself, I think we have to be careful about giving a blank check to go in and change it around without at least having something on file showing what happened, which would be happening with the zoning clearance. So some of the other comments, you know, the propagation maps, they recommended changing the language from the minimum height necessary to the optimal height needed to close the gaps. You know, now we're talking about kind of word juggling here, and there is a provision in the ordinance right now to try to minimize the height when feasible. I think that having a phrase that talks about optimizing the height would run counter to that other provision. There was mention of colocation opportunities. So, you know, the county website that we've, that we will upload showing both existing permits, as well as modified permits, and new facilities, will be useful both for the industry to look at where facilities are, as well as for people that have RF concerns, so that they can avoid these sites, or not send, you know, not attend public events where there's wireless facilities nearby. That is a dual approach. And we'll also ask for a colocation letter that's in the application submittal requirements that'll be on file. So when another facility is proposed nearby that area, we can pull out the letters and suggest that they ask if they can co-locate first. Let's see here. So we talked about the fees. Yeah, and I think the amateur radio community needs to really take advantage of the 6409 modifications. There is a shot clock on that, so that has 60 days to be approved or denied for the new federal rules. They're also technically categorized as public safety. Public safety gets an exemption from the development standards, although, given public safety facilities in the county today are required to get a permit from the Planning Division. So it's a, it's a level playing field for all different types of wireless operators. We did not receive any comments during this project from the sheriff's office, or fire department, or any other public safety officials. I think the fire department, the fire division sent in one letter about the brush clearance, I think, but it didn't have, you know, basically, the permitting structure was okay. Is there anything else, Rosemary? All right. I think that is all for now.
Applicant has no other rebuttal?
I believe that's it, unless you had a question regarding the industry comment on the definition. If you do, I'll let Jeff Barnes respond to that, but if you don't, we can drop it. You're all looking rather tired.
Commissioner's pleasure. Counselor?
I'm not sure what the question is.
As I recall, there was an industry request that we remove the definition for 6409A, section 6409A modifications. They thought the definition relied too heavily on the actual federal language.
Okay, well, yeah, that was, that's the point of including that definition. As I explained earlier, federal law prims our authority to deny modification requests that's allowed under 6409. And so the purpose of including that definition, again, is to basically plug that federal law and federal requirement into our ordinance in a fashion that requires a ministerial approval or denial. And so the definition itself just carries forward the federal law and federal requirement into our zoning ordinance.
So, correct me if my understanding then is, we can't be more restrictive than the federal law, but where there's the open area, we can plug something in there for our discretionary process. Give you an example is that's the safety aspect of the height of the antenna in a given location. You know, it's, we can't deny it, but we can certainly set parameters regarding safety of that antenna in an area. Is that what you're saying to me?
Not quite. My, what I'm trying to say is that 6409 only deals with a specific set of modifications that, under federal law, we have to allow. And the federal law isn't self-implementing, if you will. Local jurisdictions like ours have to implement that law somehow through their own local rules. And so by defining the 6409, that allows us to basically implement that federal law and plug it into our, into our ordinance and into our process. And so in terms of the 6409 modification, it would just depend, it's, we either grant it or deny it, and so our analysis is based on the federal rules for doing that. And so then, that's the only issue.
Okay. All right.
Commissioner Westner, just one last comment on the 6409. It seemed to me the industry was actually asking us to not address 6409 in our ordinance. And our position was, we put in as little, we felt it was critical for us to address it. We think that every jurisdiction that will eventually need to address 6409 in their ordinance. The whole purpose of this ordinance is to provide a clear process and set of permitting requirements for wireless facilities. To us, it made no sense not to include a definition for it, in particular, a definition that simply is consistent with the federal law. At the same time, we didn't want to provide a lot of details about 6409, because there's a real chance that that provision may be legislated. We don't know for sure, but, so what we did was, we put a definition that said essentially, whatever federal law is, that's what we're doing, and you get to process that with a zoning clearance. So we think we've taken an appropriate stand regarding that particular law. I also just wanted to, in the event there's still some confusion about it, the industry brought up the word modification, and I believe they just didn't understand how we had used that word. I don't think that some of the representatives here know that we have modifications defined in detail in our non-coastal zoning ordinance for a wide range of modification types. And all we did in the ordinance was to retain that same structure. But we pulled out the 6409 as a separate type of modification while continuing to define, which is our goal, again, to clearly define what types of modifications are allowed to facilities, because there is a wide range that's permitted. We wanted to make it clear to everyone what fits into different boxes. What fits into the zoning clearance box? What fits into the permit adjustment box? What fits into the major or minor mod box? And that was our goal.
Okay. Is that all for the applicant? Any staff comments? I'm having too much fun with this. Okay. Any questions of staff, not the applicant? Commissioner Dukas.
I'll direct this, the planning director and the county council, what happens if we do not approve this ordinance? And, you know, 5-0, we just reject it. We don't, we recommend that the Board of Supervisors not adopt this. What happens?
Yeah, it would depend on what the board would want to do, right? We would take your recommendation to the board, and the board may choose to adopt it anyway, may choose to take your Planning Commission's recommendations, or may choose to send staff back to modify whatever issues there are. But the, it's important to remember that this didn't come at the, at the recommendation of staff. This was from the board directed us to process this ordinance, so I'm pretty sure they want to see it.
Okay. I guess I was getting at, is there a danger of a preemption where the county isn't involved in knowing what's going on in the community, if we don't have standards? Say we just let the federal exemption stand, and the county does nothing, then what?
Then there'll be less clarity for applicants and for the Planning Division. The whole purpose of this ordinance is to provide clear, just like Rosemary was discussing, clear permitting routes, clear standards, and integrating the federal law with our overall process. And so there'll be more confusion and less clarity if we don't enact an ordinance, some ordinance.
Yeah, that's correct. So, I mean, clearly, we would implement the federal law, and we would, we would create the documents and do the training necessary for the staff to implement the federal law. But we would still be using 1999 guidelines, which really, for staff and for our customers, is not all that helpful.
Any further questions of staff? Then I will close the public hearing, and the commission will deliberate. Commissioners? Don't rush up here all at once.
This is one of those situations where my background is totally inadequate to deal with a situation. I was, however, I was thankful that you did include pictures. I understand we're trying to strike a balance here. I'm concerned, and I heard staff tell me that we're trying to strike a balance between aesthetics and public health. As far as I'm concerned, in this, at this time in our lives and space, that I would lean more heavily to public welfare and health than I would aesthetics. And quite frankly, if a tower's better at 180 feet or 60 feet, I'd have the 180-foot tower. That's how I feel about it. There obviously is a health and safety issue here. There are guidelines. People are concerned. There are distances. People are talking about it. The technology is changing. I'm not sophisticated enough to know and understand what's going to happen or what is happening now. And I understand you're striking a balance as best you can based on what you know now, and all I can do is go along with you and you're expert, because I don't have any independent knowledge that would counter that. But I am mindful that there are health and safety issues involved in this, and I hope the county would exercise its discretion in favor of public health, as opposed to aesthetics.
Thank you. Commissioner, anybody else? Commissioner Dukas?
Not to be contrary, but I think the public served by preserving the county's community character. And for that reason, I'm in favor of the least visually intrusive wireless communications facilities that are possible and practicable. And I feel like there should be a difference spelled out between our preemption on coverage versus capacity issues. I think that there's, for lack of a better term, wiggle room that the county has in its discretion between denying coverage and perhaps demanding a more rigorous review of the desire for capacity, so that we preserve our police powers as much as possible. I feel that Ventura County is a very special place. We have a unique topography and many visual resources that need to be preserved, so I feel like it's inappropriate to compare our standards with that of an area that maybe isn't as hilly or mountainous as other areas in the country where they have extremely high towers. I think that, over the years, at least since 96, we've been grappling with these to try and strike a balance between the rollout of... and strike a balance between the rollout of the service, which more and more people are relying on, and is important with that of our community character. So, one thing that has always concerned me is that the siting of these facilities is always real estate-driven. It's always whoever's the willing, you know, lesser of property. In some cases, we're fortunate enough to have people who can lease out areas in a, in a specific area where they provide that service. But my experience and observation has been that wherever somebody has the ability to site these towers, that the, the siting of them has not always been as sensitive as they need to be. And these are a network. You're not only served by high antenna. You need to have a network that goes further and further, closer down. That's just, you know, and I'm seeing a nod from our experts, so it's not just me saying So, I would, I would be wary of the last puzzle piece in that network not fitting and having some kind of impact that's really bothersome to people, whether it's that last puzzle piece that's on a protected ridge line, or it's next to a school, even though I'm part of the 50% that relies on, I believe, science, that the standards in place are sufficient to protect our well-being. I think that if they weren't, we'd see cancer clusters. We'd see, we'd see impacts. It wouldn't just be 3% of the people who feel things that may or may not be caused by this. So, I have that, I'm in that 50%. I think that some of the problems with this ordinance is the lack of clarity and definitions. I do not like using the term of art stealth when what we're trying to get is hidden. I think that the purpose of the signage is not to say, hey, look, people, avoid this area because you're gonna get, you know, you're gonna have some kind of impact from this base station. I don't think that's realistic. The signage requirements are to protect the workers, to make sure that their safety, because they're coming right up next to it. So I liked the suggestion that we have the word hidden instead of stealth and that we come up with something else, you know, least, you know, least visually intrusive, or some other standard, that would still roll out the next generation of coverage and service while protecting the look of the, of the county. I don't believe that despite people's very fervent beliefs that there's health impacts, and I understand we're precluded from basing our decision on it, I don't believe that we are precluded from discussing it. I am satisfied that the standards for, you know, this non-ionizing radiation are sufficient to protect public health, when you're talking about something that's maybe 40 feet in the air that's beaming out this way, it doesn't even, you don't even come close enough to it for it to be a problem. So I think that, I disagree with my colleague, that we need to preserve community character and everything that we can do in order to preserve that is something that we should be doing. And that, I would like to see, you know, those language changes and to restate some of these things that I just have, I just have problems with, that we inherited these sites that weren't based, you know, on the best technology, what was most optimal. It was, you know, what building they could be located on where people didn't, you know, boycott that building because they thought that there might be a health risk. So that's my two cents.
Commissioner Rodriguez?
We've been piecemealing these things and these CUP renewals, et cetera, for the whole, seems like the whole time I've been here, which is, I guess, pushing eight years. And the siting issues have been certainly part of the problem. It seems like the commission has moved in the direction of their decisions to include the aesthetics of appearance, or lack of appearance of a tower, to minimize the impact, the visual impact it has. And I appreciate the county scenic overviews in various geographical areas in the county. I don't recall we've ever had any sort of extensive information as it relates to the impact, the health impacts of these cell towers, particularly when they're located in the urban areas. And certainly, we have a lot of urban areas in the county relative to the city populations. I, for one, I think have included some of my comments to deal with aesthetics, I think, more so than the safety issues to the public. I certainly was aware of it, it just wasn't as, as much of an issue, I suppose, in my decision-making process at the time. I appreciate and commend staff for the amount of effort they put into this to try to roll this into an ordinance in response to the board's request. But we've also heard from staff and the issues, the problems they've had with doing this, particularly, and as relates to that, we've heard from the commercial side of this operation, the wireless companies obviously are vested here. We haven't heard an awful lot from the, from the smaller potential operators. We've certainly heard from the amateur radio contingent here. And I, and I've read the, I've read the, gone through the reports and the staff reports, and obviously, there was some time put into, into input from the amateur radio operators. But I sense, I, while it's not true, I almost have a sense that amateur radio operators were an addendum to the driving force to kind of bring some regulation to the commercial side of wireless here. And staff's own, staff's own comments, certainly comments from their consultant, expert consultant, indicate that it's certainly not the best ordinance as it relates to amateur radio, and certainly not the worst. And it's kind of the best we can do, given the parameters and what the, what planning is trying to do. I feel, and I also am sensitive to the fact that, in response to comments we heard this morning, that the fee structure the county has in place for the wireless world and the permit process has a potential, has a negative or potential negative impact on ham operators and their ability to, to function. And as it relates to that operation, that, the ham operator world is the fallback for public safety, whether it's a disaster, whether it's a fire, whether it's an earthquake, whatever it might be, particularly as it relates to earthquake situations or flood situations where you have the potential for towers to go down or to go off-grid, if you will. And you have no communications. You fall back, and we've fallen back on ham radio operators for years, as far as we can go back, to maintain or try to establish communication. I almost feel that we need a separate ordinance to deal specifically with ham operation. And if this, if this ordinance proceeds forward to the board, because obviously, the board's asked for something and we need to do something, I would, I would propose excising that portion, that of the community, the ham operator portion of the community. We've done an awful lot of work, it wouldn't be like starting all over again, but we certainly got the framework to address that specifically and move forward, I guess, in a pronged approach to this thing. Because I think it's, there's a real public safety, public service, public health, public safety issue that's, that's in play here. And as staff has told us, there's a lot of big things coming down in the world of public safety communications in the next five to 10 years in the pipeline. I mean, I, that, public safety is my foundation, and I was in place to bring on the 911 system in my prior capacity here with the sheriff's department. And I was amazed when I recently found out, like, we're into the fifth generation of that, of that initial implementation. And so there are dynamic changes going on, and we will be able to transmit, digitally transmit live from scene to various things. So, I, I think, I think there's a, again, it goes back to definition and what the, how amateur radio is considered as it relates to the county and, but I think they serve enough of a public service, public safety service, to be inclusive within fire and police services is how, how they go through the process here of installing their equipment or handling their equipment and those fees that go accordingly. And that would just be my recommendation to the board, along with whatever happens. Our disposition here is on this ordinance proposal.
Our new commissioner?
Well, I like keeping the photos in for the same, for the reason that when you're defining stealth, then you have examples of what stealth are. So that's kind of where I'm coming from on that. And I think I tend to agree with Commissioner Rodriguez on the, on considering the ham operators separately, as he was just discussing. My thought is that we do need an ordinance, we need something better than what we have. So this is pretty much, you know, this gives us everybody something to work with. It is my understanding that there can be modifications, amendments, you know, down the line as necessary. That's all my observations for the moment.
Thank you. Before I move forward, let's remember the staff has agreed to the 180-day restoration instead of 90 days, three revisions, and that they will offline continue to work with the ham operators, pretty much in my review exhibit 10. I believe it's, it's one of those things got overturned, they were not prepared to deal with, but they're trying to do in an agreement with your comments, that it's an asset, quasi-public asset that we need to deal with.
Excuse me, Mike, they agreed to the site, 180 days to step in.
That young lady down there?
Yeah.
Rosemary said she said.
She'd go with 180 days, yes.
Did I misquote?
That's correct.
Thank you. Now, with that all said, I was sitting here listening to all this, and I've been listening to it for too long. I remember the first time we had a workshop to, what would a guideline even look like? So, it reminds me, as I brought back, is what happened when the federal government decided to install the interstate system in the United States. Seems simple enough until all of a sudden, we develop rings around cities, and then we can even go back as far as the first traffic light in Cleveland. You know, first you had to have enough cars to have a traffic issue. So, what I'm evolving here to is, we're here, we're gonna make this first cut. This is Ventura County, so the aesthetics are who and what we are. It's not Dayton, though with global warming, probably we'll all be in Dayton one day, but that's, and I have seen that array, by the way, just so you know. So we have to deal with the fact that this culture in this county deals with aesthetics. But that's where this case-by-case analysis, I think, staff has placed in here, at the best of ability, what fits best at that particular location. As far as the siting, I understand what Commissioner Dukas is saying, but I also know, as I said before, AT&amp;T or Verizon, whoever would like that site, but then that property owner has to agree to it. And I know for a fact through two of my clients, churches, they were just fearful of whatever they were fearful of. That would have been the optimal site, but that property owner did not want it. So then, they had to try and find something else to fill their network. So again, to me, it's an ordinance that is crafted, and I want to compliment staff for trying to deal with a very complex issue with four different levels of laws that are involved. And thanks to the professor, we also now have the joint commission on hospitals involved. So, I want to thank you for introducing that. So, it is a balancing act, as with all laws, and all new laws, not going to be perfect. Why? It's drawn by human beings. But it's a start, it's the reason why the board of supervisors requested it, to bring it forward, and through the basic process of thesis and antithesis, we get the synthesis. And I think that's where we're at. So, the chair can support what staff has presented with those changes. Do, I'll entertain a motion at this time?
Go ahead. Make your motion. I would make a motion that we move forward with recommended staff action, staff recommendation with the, with the provision that we recommended to the board of supervisors, that they move separately on the issue of ham radio operation in this county and the infrastructure regulations that go with that. I think there's still more work to do. I think there's some confusion there, and we haven't heard all the information that we probably need to do on that particular issue. That would be my motion.
I second the motion. You have a second on the motion? Any discussion on the motion? If not?
Excuse me?
Yes?
Could I just get a point of clarification on that? Because I want to be certain that we are all understanding the same thing. If we go forward and strip out everything that we've done to really accommodate and streamline for the wireless, it's going to go back to the existing, which already requires that they, that they have permitting, right? It's already in there, a CUP over 40 feet high and a zoning clearance under. So the existing regulation is going to stay, and if the board doesn't take you up on that, because I think that the planning department has years-long in the queue our work effort, then it will stay the way it is now. And so I just want to make sure that that's really what you want to do, as opposed to maybe sending the staff back or maybe expressing your concerns and giving us the time between now and then to work further with the wireless industry, because, you know, it could be that that decision is going to make it more difficult for them and not, less difficult. And I realize, and I instructed staff to reach out, and I sat in the first meeting just how important it is, right, to the Office of Emergency Services. I, and my first comments to them was, I plan on doing no harm. I don't want to do any harm to them, to that industry, and I want to be very careful about the amateur radio. But I'm not sure that this is going to make it more difficult for them, and I'm not sure that we'd get that direction from the board, given the workload that the board already knows that we have, and it's intense. And what I'm going to talk to you a little bit later is about the general plan assignment that we're going to have on top of it. So I just want you to weigh that in that conversation that you're having before you take that vote.
Can I discuss it further? Yeah, let's discuss it further. Let me, let me interpret what you're saying. Do I hear you saying you prefer that we, resident approve and go forward, that we have staff go back and work on the ordinance more specifically relates to the amateur, amateur radio operators? I mean, my, my comments were based on the fact that, and my recommendation in the motion was that, that the board would receive those comments and weigh that, and if they agreed with it, they would send it back to staff to do that work. Or if they opted not to, then they would move forward with staff's recommendation as we see it today. Am I off-base here?
Commissioner Rodriguez, I think in the work product that you're giving us to do Commissioner Rodriguez, I think in the work product that you're giving us to do, saying that you recommend that we go forward to the board with stripping it out, we would actually have to do that exercise, right? And that would be, that would be an exercise that we would have to do in order to bring the board both options, right? And I think that then we would have to, to sit down with the, with the group again and explain what that means to them. I think what's...
Are you, you're suggesting then that we had, when you make the presentation to the board, you, you impart to them the discussion we had regarding public safety and the potential for separating it?
Right.
And let them decide?
Right, right. I think let them decide, or give us the opportunity to see, you know, I didn't hear opposition from the, from the group that we've been working with, saying that they trust that we're going to do the right thing at the end of it. So, right? So, I want to reach out to, to this fellow here and really understand his concerns. Some of them I didn't get at all, and some of them were just simply not factually correct, right, that we were going to require a, a different sort of permit if it wasn't attached to your house. So, I think there was a lot of misinformation there that I'd like to have the opportunity. But I'm not sure that, you know, throwing the whole thing out and saying, we need a whole ordinance to, to regulate ham rock, operators, that might not be the best use of our time or energy either, because I think when we go back and look through the records, maybe we've found five altogether, you know, permits that have been attained for this. So, you know, we have lots of things, we're issuing 1,200, 1,300 permits a year, we've maybe found five in 10 years that we've actually issued on this. So, I'm not sure it's even worthy of an ordinance change, or worthy, or, or we're best off just trying to work with them in the submittal applications, what we need and what we don't. We're not going to ask, as Mr. Sebold said, he would be irritated if somebody asked him for $300 a time every time he wanted to change his repeater. We're not going to ask that, right? We're not asking for a, a permit adjustment every time you change a repeater. So, we'll be very careful in what we mean by maintenance, right? But I'm not sure that it's problematic enough to say that we're going to ask the board to write an ordinance just for this very small, small area of the county permitting, right, when there's, when there's so many things on our list. I just, just, just something to take into consideration. I think that our working group says that they trust us, I, I want to do the right thing by this industry and by the, the police and Office of Emergency Services, although when the fire department is coming in here for an antenna, over 40 feet high, they're getting a CUP. I think what we've heard from the industry, same as the sheriff, right? I think what we've heard from the industry is, that's not really what they're about. They're about co-locating on somebody else's tower. You're not going to find probably a big, you know, a big demand to go out on a vacant, open space piece of property and build yourself a lattice tower to put on repeater stations. They're gonna re, put it on something that's already there. They're gonna build something that's attached to their home, which is already allowed for them to do. So, the only place it gets tricky at all is if they're going to go and add a 50-foot tower all by themselves and saying, we're just gonna use this as, as amateur radio operators. That hasn't happened in the county in the, in the entire time I've been here, unless it's happened without permitting authority.
If I can? I don't think you asked, I may misunderstood the motion, that strip it out, more that the board consider it.
Right, exactly, exactly.
So, it was just more of a direction for the board to be aware of the situation and whatever staff and the amateur radio come up with between now and then, but that it be considered.
Exactly.
Not stripped out.
Okay, so then that was my point of clarification. I was wondering, so do we go forward with the ordinance?
Yes.
As it's written and saying, but the planning commission had concerns and they wanted you consider perhaps taking it out altogether? Or, we've worked it out in the interim, but this is what the planning commission says? That's, that's the expectation? I just wanted to be sure I wasn't gonna go forward to the board with something other than what you wanted.
No, my, my motion is, obviously expressed the concerns as it relates to ham radio operations, and, and for them to consider excising that portion of the ordinance into a separate ordinance to deal with that. I, the comments, the questions and the comments I heard this morning as it relates to that subject indicates to me that there's still a lot of work and information out there that can be, that needs to be considered and, and massaged into whatever is in front of us today as it relates to that community.
Okay.
Before it goes to the board.
Okay. Any further discussion? Yes?
Is that practicable to, I mean, it's gonna go before the board? It's gonna go before the board fairly soon.
Wait, okay, if I can, when we give direction to staff, they have always followed that direction, particularly when it's a recommended action, taking forward. So, when the director represents to me, at least in my experience, it will take place and it will be presented.
It will happen.
Yeah, so when we direct her, it always takes place, so.
Okay. Okay, I mean, because there were definitely considerations, she did say that they do have that working relationship and they are planning to, to take care of that, and we discussed how this is a, an amendable item, so.
Yep. Any further discussion, any further? All right. We shall vote now on the motion. Motion passed, word of one. With that, ladies and gentlemen, it'll move forward to the Board of Supervisors with the directions that have been provided by them. We want to thank you for your time, all of your testimonies and your patience. We are plowing new ground. Welcome to the 22nd century. All right, we'll take, pause just a couple minutes while, because we have other work business to take care of. No, 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 just wait about 30 seconds till the room clears. This is what I wish I had my theme music. Oh, you want my pictures?
I'm a visual guy, just as most guys are. Oh, you want those?
No, just one sec.
Oh, you want?
I got that, Matt.
You got it? All right.
Pictures are very helpful. Pictures have always been helpful. Especially helpful for this thing.
Yeah. All right, ladies and gentlemen, let's, the commission pursue its other items. We're moving on to item eight, the discussion reports by the planning director and other matters.
Very good, thank you very much. I have a, you know, a few, well, first I would like to, to welcome Commissioner Kelly myself, so I think that it's, it's great to have her on board, and I have had lunch with her and gone out and, and had conversations about how it works here, and, and so I think she's gonna be a really good fit. At the same time, I'm sad to say goodbye to Lori, because...
What?
She's leaving us to go to the clerk of the boards.
Wait, but where are you going? What is this, a stepping stone?
She's going to the clerk. It is, yes. You know, they already know how to work the equipment, and they're so good that the clerk of the board always sees them.
Denise, Rochelle, now Lori, what?
I know, and Rochelle has gone to LAFCO, so that's kind of the domino effect. So, she's gone to LAFCO, Lori's going upstairs, and then we'll be interviewing hopefully next week for, but she will be with us next week for our next week's hearing, so, you know, just to go over the planning commission hearing, we have on February 12th, which will be Lori's last day, so we'll send her off with an exciting land use hearing. It's gonna be CUP for the keeping of inherently dangerous animals and wild animals.
Teenagers, not birds.
That will, that will be fun. Let's see, on the site visits for that, I know that we've had one commissioner that's gone out, we'll have another commissioner that goes out on Monday, so, you know, the, under those new land use rules, you're, you're well, you're perfectly able to go out, you know, if you would coordinate that through the, the staff planning, that makes, we make sure who's out there and when they're out there, so we don't end up getting a quorum for some reason. So, if you want to go out for that hearing, that is your prerogative to do that. And then also on February 19th is our next planning commission hearing after that, and that is an appeal of two zoning clearances, so that's a first, it's a new one for us, an appeal of a zoning clearance that we issued on a land use entitlement, so that will be an interesting hearing scheduled for February 19th. The next item that we have on the board is this item. So, March 24th, we'll be going to the board with your recommendations on the wireless ordinance, so we'll take them out with the input that we've received today, and hopefully some more conversations with the amateur radio folks, and we'll go to the board as scheduled on the 24th. The board did meet on the 27th of this month, last week, they met on the Antera, and so that, that CUP was before your planning commission recently, and you weighed in on that, but what they had also filed was a pre-screening to amend the ordinance, and pre-screenings to amend the ordinance go directly to the Board of Supervisors. What they were asking for was to allow Class II waste disposals injection wells into the AE zone, and the board said no to that on a four-to-one vote, so that stops any further processing we have on that ordinance amendment. So, we will not be having that work product to do.
Excuse me, does that, that CUP expires in two or three years?
So, the CUP itself expires in 2018, and what they are allowed to do is apply for a continuation permit. So, if they do apply for a continuation permit, which is allowed under the code, under two findings that have to be met, that decision is, is yours to make, so it would be back before the planning commission for a continuation permit. That it would be a permit that anybody could apply for, for a non-conforming use, as long as the use doesn't expand. So, say you're allowed 10 trips a day, you could only have 10 trips a day, right? So, if, if they, that's the, that's the only way that that facility will be able to operate past the expiration date. So, that's a decision for the planning commission, and we would bring that before you.
So, we'd see that around 2017 if they applied ahead of it?
Yeah, if they applied, I mean, they could apply at any time.
Oh, okay. I, I just want to give a heads up to the new commissioner, she'll be the chair then.
So, and then I wanted to talk to you about another item that I took to the board last week as well, and it was to ask the board for some direction on a general plan update. And so, essentially, you know, our general plan sunsets in 2020, so it's 2015 right now, it's time to get going on, on what we think that vision is going to be for 2020 and beyond, and that's also, you know, setting a horizon period, whether it be 20 years or 25 years, some communities are setting it for 30. So, we went to the board just to say, we think it's a good idea that we hire a consultant that can perhaps help the community and the planning commission and the board and staff really envision on what this project will look like, and what the board really wants it to look like, and the community wants it to look like. And so, the board did give us some funds, and we have an RFP out that we're going to send, and we want our consultant to really have a specialty and a knowledge in doing general plan updates. It's much different than, you know, having a consultant come in to prepare the plans for a gas station, right? It's a very specific area of law. And so, we're, we're, we're reaching out to consulting firms that just do that, or have a specialty in that. And what we're asking them to do is a several-step program. We want them to come in and just look at our general plan and the way that it's arranged, and how it's arranged, and, and the 10 area plans that we have, and just, you know, give us some basic feedback on that, and, and to look at some contemporary planning trends on, hmm, this is maybe the way it was done, because it really hasn't been comprehensively updated since the 80s, so maybe it's still in the 80s format, and maybe there could be a, a better way of looking at it. And so, we're gonna ask them to do that, and then prepare an initial report, and then we're going to ask them to meet a minimum of, of two big public workshops, probably at different times, places in the county and different times during the day, to get some initial feedback from the community, and then to meet with key staff. I mean, every single agency is, has a role in the general plan. There's 110 programs in the general plan right now, and all of the area plans controlled by APCD, the Parks Department, the Planning Department, the Transportation Department, so everybody has a role in that. And then we're going to ask them to facilitate a joint planning commission, board of supervisor workshop, that they would come and, and just talk about general plan law and, and what's going on, and here's what yours looked like, and here's what the community said, and then get some feedback from, from you, and then they would be going to do individual interviews, probably with you, with the board members, with people that have a vested interest in this. And then we would be asking them to come back and prepare, and to prepare a report that gives the board a series of options, both budgetarily staffing and, and length of time, on what the board wants to do. You know, you can make your, your document, which is really what I believe that we did on the last go-around, we extended the horizon period 10 years, and we made a legally defensible document. And the state, you know, every time the legislature meets, they want you to do something new, and lots of times they put it in this box, saying, the next time you comprehensively update your ordinance, you need to address this. So, then you find communities don't comprehensively update, because they don't want to address those big issues, like, you know, sea level rise and, and complete streets, big things like that. So, you know, this would be, if it's a comprehensive update, we're going to be addressing those things. Or, you know, are we going to, to go out and look at really a, a public health or a community element? Are we going to look at perhaps a standalone element for agriculture? We need to look at, a lot of communities have a standalone element for compatibility with your Navy base. And so, even if we have a lot of policies kind of all over strewn throughout the, the general plan that addresses those issues, we might want to think about bringing them together in new elements. So, the, the state doesn't tell you how to put your general plan together, what format it needs to be into, they don't even tell you how often you need to have it done outside of the housing element, that's the only one that's on a schedule, everything else is a little bit of a free-for-all. So, we're looking, you know, maybe somebody outside looking in just to say, hey, you know, they did it this way in another community, and it's really working well, or yours really works really good here, but there's a few things that we think you can tweak, and so we're just trying to be really open to this process. And so, one of the things that, and, and the board was very supportive of it, one of the things that we did ask, because I've, I sit on the executive committee for the California County Planning Directors Association, so I meet with, you know, 30, 40 planning directors a couple of times a year, and this is a big topic, right? We always talk about, what happened? You know, you were updating that thing nine years ago, you know, so you're nine years, $11 million into it. So, we were really trying to find the, the, what happens to general plan updates that just really get out of control in time and in money and in scope. And, and what a lot of the planning directors have said is that, you know, you don't, you don't get off to a good start. You didn't set good fence posts to begin with, you didn't get really good direction from your board about, here's exactly what we want you to do, and here's where we want you to stop, right? Don't, don't go out over here. And so, that's what we're really trying to get, we're trying to get off on a good foot, we're, we're trying to get some really good direction from the, from the board using this process. So, when they finally do say, we're gonna choose option F, you know, that that's the way that we're going to move forward, and then we'll come back with a full budget scope of work, you know, how much consultant time versus how much staffing time. So, we know already the, the work program that we have from the board, you know, which is including new things, like the dark sky ordinance in Ojai, and it's including the things that Supervisor Parks put forward, the expansion of the radius, I mean, so we have a long work program, and then we have these things that are added to it. We need to know how much staff that we need, and we need to know how much consultant time we need, and how we're gonna finish off the projects that are already on our list, and which one of those projects will maybe dovetail into a general plan update. So, there's a lot of work going on. The good news and the bad news, probably for you, is that a lot of communities use citizens advisory committees, you know, to kind of narrow down that, and so we've, we've told the board that we would have the consultants scope that out as part of one of the alternatives, and they said, no, they don't need to do that, because they have a very capable planning commission, and that's what you all will be used for. And I think that's great, because I do think you're a very capable planning commission, and, and so, but we'll be here a lot, probably, over the next few years. So, that's, that's something to consider, because, you know, you're going to play a very key role in the visioning of the county for the next 20 or 30 years, and so I just wanted to get that on your radar before we would be calling you to, to, you know, to sit down and have these meetings. So, if there's a way that I can help you, you know, get familiar, provide you all hard copies of the ordinance, or if you want to have, you know, some sort of other workshop here before the consultants get ahold of you, or you just want to have them, you know, talk to you like that, too, that's fine. I'm kind of looking for a little input on how you would like me to help you get more, more familiar with the general plan and the area plans and how it's structured, because this process is going to be very quickly, probably within, you know, a four or five month period before we come back before the board.
Would it be appropriate to tell you now what we...
Sure.
Okay. I, for one, have not been very good about...
or five-month period before we come back before the board.
Would it be appropriate to tell you now what we...
Sure.
Okay. I, for one, have not been very good about changing out the changes. In my book, I have a drawer where all these papers are, and they're not as organized as they should be. So, I would like a fresh start.
Sure.
To refamiliarize myself with the paper copies. I know that this is fantastic, and it's greener, but I'm just 20th century again. I like paper.
Okay. Yeah. So, I mean, I could provide you, each one of you, the set of the general plan and policies, and the appendices, the way that it looks now. And then you can decide whether you want all 10 area plans or not, or whether you just want the area plans that are in your districts, or whether you want to look at the area plans online. That's up to you. If I gave you everything, you know, you'd get probably that.
Well, that's not even half of the landfill in Simi Valley.
Yeah, this is true.
Commissioner Rodriguez, she's had...
Excuse me. It sounds like we might want to consider some sort of training day for the planning commission prior to, prior to presentation by consultants on the general plan?
Yeah, it's up to you.
Or after the fact, even?
So, well, after the fact, they would be, they would be coming and doing the presentation, right? So, after the fact, they would be coming, gathering it, going out to the community, and coming and talking at the joint session between you and the board, all about general plans. It will be general plan 101, here's how they work, all the way to, here's what the community said, and here's some suggestions.
So, if we're, if we're ahead of it, instead of responding to it, we're part of, are we part of who suggests, of who has the power to suggest where we need more elements in our general plan?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. I'm in favor of that.
Anything else, Director?
Nope, that's it.
No, the only thing I would say along to that, because it's been 23 years since I went through that. One of the things I found helpful back then was to go over the law, and what hinges on what, like you discussed, the housing element, it's a mandatory certain period of time. But as we found out during the rise in the property values, we had to create a whole new top-in on the housing elements, as far as that. If there's a hierarchy, or if not that, then a, if you do the housing element, it affects the traffic and circulation element kind of thing.
Mm-hmm.
You know, so, the starting point, and how the ripples would come out from there. And I would rely on my experts to have that starting point and come out here, as opposed to all of a sudden, we just jump into the traffic and circulation. But there's the impacts of this. Because I remember when we went through this, I think it was '98 here, some of the Amberville and some of these other things that were discussed in '68 and '78, just didn't apply anymore, but they were still in the general plan, so kind of thing. So, if we could have a systematic, this is really the core, and then we work out from there, that would be helpful for me. Because, yeah, the second part that I would bring up is, measure A is due to sunset, what, in three years?
Mm-hmm.
And so, but I am assuming that there would be discussion with that in the updates, if it doesn't happen, or if it does happen. Okay?
Yeah. And we'll know that early enough, because it will be voted on in 2016.
Yeah. Okay. All right. Anything else from the Director?
No, that's all I had.
All right. Any other answers? Then, planning commission, want to introduce anything?
I understand, or maybe it's happened already, Kim, that the housing issue that went past the commission in Piru is on appeal to the board, or was appealed to the board?
Did Cohen withdraw the appeal?
Yes. Yeah, thank you for reminding me of that. The CDC project, the Cabrillo Economic Development Corporation, that your planning commission approved, was appealed by the Piru Neighborhood Council, which was also a first. But, and they took it...
A first of what?
It was a first that a neighborhood council, or a municipal advisory council, anything like that, would appeal the decision of the planning commission. So...
Good common sense, Mike.
Well, they withdrew, because they went back to the AIPAC, the Agricultural Advisory Committee, and they tried to get AIPAC to change their position, and they did not. So, you know, this was a project that had a lot of early input from the Ag Policy Group and the Ag Commissioner, and designed their project around that. And so, it is moving forward. And I believe the concession that was made by CDC, who is a nonprofit, but they are putting in a sidewalk.
Excuse me, Kim, some stuff. That was scheduled for the last supervisors' meeting. Was the matter put over? How was it handled, wasn't it?
Piru Neighborhood Council withdrew the appeal.
Right. That's what Tim told me.
Right. So, they withdrew their appeal. And in order for them to withdraw their appeal, they, CDC agreed to put in a longer sidewalk to get the children up to the crosswalk. So, they're putting a sidewalk in front of maybe four or five parcels to get up there. And so, that was the, that was the agreement that was made, and with that, they withdrew. So, that was supposed to go to the board yesterday, or on Tuesday. Sorry.
Yeah. And I know the rest of the story.
Thank you.
I'm sure there's a story there somewhere. Yes.
Anything else from any other commissioners? Just for the new commissioners, this is where you can just bring things up that, under the Brown Act, doesn't have to be agenda-ed, because you're just talking about things. So, if there's any questions, concerns you would like to bring forward, this will be the place to do it.
You're going to love the hearings over inherently dangerous animals.
You've been around teenagers.
My teenagers were very old.
Have to find out what your secret was. All right. With that, I would like to, I would like to see the fact that we get a contract for the clerks for a minimum of five years. All right.
Yeah. I enjoy looking at her feels of lavender on her screensaver, right, you know?
Okay.
Going to miss that.
All right. Well, since we'll have her next week, we'll, I'd like to then adjourn the meeting in honor of our new commissioner. Welcome.
Thank you.
Meeting is adjourned.